All rise for the pledge of allegiance. So, thank you. So, we'll move into consideration of the agenda for this evening. There are several more administrative type things this evening, but the kind of meat of the meeting is really centered around two special use permit applications. One is for 31 scoops and one is for the Torchport Airport events scheduled coming up. So, beyond that, there are a few other items that we, some of them later in the agenda, we may not actually get to, depending on how long it takes us to get through these two special use permits. And so, we just may adjust at that time, but we'll see. At this point, for the commission members, is there any items or questions about the agenda? Any concerns? Okay. The only other thing I would mention regarding the agenda is that item six is public comment on the agenda other than new business. So, what we're going to do is we're going to open it up at that point on the agenda for comments for the planning commission to hear from the public, but it will only be on those topics that are not those two special use applications. And then, because there will be a specific time for public comments for each one respectively of those special use applications. So, I just want to make that clear to everyone. So, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as written here?
I'll move to. It's on. I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Is there's anyone at this, on the commission, that has a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda? Laura? What can you? Torchport, and why is that?
I live there.
You live there. Live within 300 feet. Okay.
I don't live out there.
So, Laura, at that particular point, then you'll be asked to step out. Okay? Are there any other pieces?
Yes, for 31 scoops. I'm a close, proximal neighbor, so.
Okay. So, for that part of the agenda, then you'll be stepping out as well. Okay? Okay. So, if there's no other conflicts of interest, we'll move into the approval of the meeting minutes of March 8th of 2022. Commission members, are there any items or clarification points that need to be made on these minutes? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 8th as drafted? Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The meetings of March 8th, 2022 are approved. So, now, we will move into public comment on the agenda items. And again, these are for any public comment that people would like to discuss or bring forward to the commission. You would have three minutes to make your comments, and this would be any subject that is not relevant to the new business items, i.e. the two special use applications. The other thing I want to mention before anyone comes forward is that, having served in the military and having been somebody who deeply cares about this great nation we live in, there are a lot of items that could come forward tonight, and there's also a meeting tomorrow night that could generate some differences of opinion. And that's fine. That's what this country is founded on. But one thing I will tell you is I will not tolerate rudeness or disrespect to anybody in this room regardless of what your opinion is. And I will ask you to leave if you can't uphold that commitment going forward. So, with that, I'm anxious to hear from anybody that's got some general comments they'd like to make. If you do, please fill out a comment card and step up to the microphone, tell us where you reside, and then please make your comments. Does anyone like to come forward?
I think I just had one. Randy? Randy Bishop, did you want to speak now?
No.
Okay. Okay. So, there is no public comment on the agenda other than items for the new business? So, ongoing reports, we'll move on to those. So, the zoning administrators' report, item seven.
There's a report on your desk for you to be able to take a look at. If you have any questions, feel free to give us a call in the office. It just lists, you know, what permits we're working on and special use and land divisions, items like that.
I have one question. It's from a general activity level perspective. Is this higher or lower, or about the same as what it's been over the last couple of years?
You know, I don't know. I haven't compared it to the previous years. It seems like it's at least on track to be similar to last year, if not more. It feels that way anyways. We've got lots of things going on and, you know, applications for the planning commission, so. Jackie's busy most of the time.
Okay. Any questions of the commission on the zoning administrators' report? Hearing none, we'll move on to the PC representatives to the ZBA report.
The ZBA met on April 20th. It was a short meeting. There were no action items left over. We discussed rules of procedure checklist to help work through cases that may come in front of the board. And that was about it. We were adjourned at 8:00, and the meeting for May has been canceled.
Bob, is there any activity that you see coming forward as far as, you know, is it, you expect it to be a busy late summer or fall, or not have any idea at this point?
Well, you know, I don't know what they have from building or zoning aspect. I would say from, just from activities that we're going to see tonight and tomorrow, I expect that something may wind up in front of the ZBA.
Any commission members have any questions of Bob? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Torch Lake Township Board Representative to the PC report.
Yeah. Yeah, we had our meeting on Tuesday, April 19th. Didn't have a whole lot of things to talk about. We didn't have any old business. We only had a few issues of new business, all pretty minor. We did hire and have a new EMS hire, and the superintendent came from Elk Rapids and talked to us about the progress that they're making on the new schools. And it sounds like most of that is going to start in October, the main stuff.
Thank you, Jason. Are there any questions or comments for Jason on his report this evening? Okay, hearing none, we'll move into item eight, which is correspondence. Sarah, do we, we had some correspondence submitted as of yesterday, but is there anything, I assume this correspondence relates to anything that's other than the new business matters, correct?
Right. The only correspondence we've received is related to either of the applications.
Okay. So, hearing that, I guess we'll move into the first new business application, which is a special use application for 31 scoops. And this is to, the request is to allow for the rental of kayaks, canoes, paddleboards, and water toys. And so, I think at this point, the procedure will be that the applicant will come forward and present their application to the commission, then we'll move into a public hearing, and then the commission will deliberate and move into a possible decision. So, please, sir.
What do you need?
What was that?
What do you need?
Well, could you, could you walk us through again, kind of your, the generals of your application?
I'm speaking.
Yep, it's on. There's also, if you have any hard time hearing, there's also some little gadgets on the back table that you can use.
Can you hear me? Basically, yeah, we just want to, you know, be able, like you said, rent out.
Lift it up.
Yeah, might have to lift it right up and put it right close to you there.
Anyways, yeah, we'd like to be able to rent out canoes, kayaks, and stuff, you know, people coming up on vacation. And a lot of times, people like to get out on the lake a little bit. They don't bring boats for themselves, and we'd like to enable that to happen for people. We'd keep the boats and kayaks and everything like that would be kept on a trailer off on the one side of the property, be off the parking lot area and that, so it wouldn't be in anybody's way. Basically, at this point in time, we would be launching most of the canoes, kayaks, and everything else from north into the lake at the DNR launch. If they want to launch it here at the day park, they're going to have to take it down themselves. They're going to have to wait in line for the boats, but we're not going to be encouraging that. We would like to tie and get them up to there, unless they're going to their own residence and stuff.
Okay, so there, I guess, a quick question for you. So, you would like to rent these different, I'll call them vehicles for lack of a better expression, and you'd like to do them for what period of time throughout the year?
Well, just basically from Memorial to Labor Day.
So, for summer months?
Yes, basically, just the summer months, yeah. We're not open after that anyways. We're just open for the summer, so it'd just be a seasonal situation.
Okay. And what hours are you operating during the summer?
As far as with the canoes and kayaks, we were thinking about like 10:00. We'd take them up, drop them off, get them situated up there, and then pick them up at 2:00. And then we'd have another session from 2:00 to 6:00. And like I said, most of the launch would be done at the north end. And if they wanted to rent it all day, well, you know, either way, be their option.
So, most of the launch would be done at the north end of Torch Lake?
If we're doing it, yes.
Okay.
If they want to take the time themselves, they can take it down there, but they're going to be waiting a long time on busy weekends.
Okay. I've got a number of questions, but I guess I would open up to the commission for other questions, because I'll continue to ask one as we go here.
I have some questions or comments.
Yes, can you just make sure you're speaking to your mic, please, Bob?
I just want to mention that you need to make sure that your renters know that once they operate one of these things outside of a surfing or bathing area, that they become watercraft, and that they have to have a Type 1, 2, 3, or an approved 5 life jacket with them. 13 or older, they have to have them with them. 12 or younger, they have to have them on.
Right.
They also need to have a noise-making device. And I don't know if you've thought about provisions, if you're supplying that with the unit to just to keep any liability from blowing back on you perhaps. Also, I'm just asking, of course, you said you're going to launch most of them at the north end.
Yes.
Going to ask if you could put some sort of unique ID on each one. I was figuring that launched at the, our launch, just to help facilitate the people down there to keep track of, once they've paid a launch fee or whatever. So, if that's doable, you know, that would be real helpful for us, for some that do go down.
Yes. Yeah, we will be supplying life jackets and everything else, as far as all that, whatever is necessary.
Okay. I think procedurally for this, because we're still going to have the public hearing, for the planning commission questions, let's kind of focus our questions on kind of more general type questions about the specifics, the facts of the application of what they're asking. And then, because I'm sure after we have the public hearing, then we go into deliberation, we'll have more specifics, and then we can ask the applicant to come back and address very specific questions, correct?
Yeah, that works. And actually, I hate to interrupt, but Bob, did you declare conflict at the beginning of the meeting for this application, or you were just disclosing that you're a neighbor?
At what point do I need to leave?
For the whole application.
For the whole process.
Yep, so.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I forgot all about that.
No problem.
Could you clarify what you just said, how we're going to proceed?
Yeah, what I was just saying is that, ask any question you would like. But I think in hearing kind of the questions Bob was just asking, although obviously he's excused from the meeting, that we kind of keep our questions to the specific facts of what's in the application.
Okay.
And then, when we'll hear the public hearing, and then we're going to have time to go back into deliberation, we'll be able to go back to the applicant to ask questions more of the finer questions, because then we'll have the full context of all the facts, both his application and public input.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. So, like the specifics, the things that are not fully provided, is that what you're saying, to ask more details on those things?
Yes. Because what I'm concerned about is that we get into nuances here without having heard from the public. And then, because that's going to shape questions that we might have that we might not otherwise. And I would prefer that we bring those together at the end when we collect all of our information, then analyze, ask his questions, because we'll have that opportunity.
Okay. So.
So, please just, please, please.
Okay. I do have specific questions about things not provided, like the screening, you feel like it's not necessary. But I have an overarching concern about the business plan. It's not, it's not really clear to me. When you say you're primarily going to be going to the north end to the boat launch, how familiar are you with how busy that boat launch gets?
Very familiar.
Time of day, if you're bringing a trailer in there, and you've got customers that want to get in the water in their time, I'm just, I'm not sure that, how you're thinking through this is, it's concerning me that it's going to be problematic.
I don't see any problems myself. I mean, we're going to take it down there, you pull off on the, you know, side, unload it, put it into the water. Oh, I'm sorry. And get them on the way, make sure they got all the life jackets and everything else they need. Then we'd be coming back, you know, four hours later or so, and picking them up. I'm not sure exactly what you mean as far as, I mean, I guess I'm a little.
Well, I don't know the size of your trailer, how many, you haven't been very specific about how many units you're going to be able to manage, how many people are going to go at once, that kind of thing. If you go in with a, you know, a trailer with, full of canoes or kayaks, and it's, that boat launch gets really congested.
Yes, they both do.
And I'm just concerned that your plan isn't specific, so I can understand it.
I'm not sure.
Like numbers, we've had, how many number, how many are you planning on having?
Well, it depends. I mean, at this point? Six.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, we're just starting off with what we have in existence at this time. And if it takes off and goes better, then we will add at that point in time. We do not want to go out and buy 20 of them, and then it doesn't happen. You're wasting money at that point.
And then, in your parking lot, it's recommended that you mark the spaces for?
For the loading.
For the loading. Are those the spaces that face, let's see, that would be the north side of your building? There's two spots there. Is that what you're planning on using as the loading area?
It would be on the south.
The south side?
South side in there. We have a grass area up there. That's what we'll be setting up, be out of the way of the traffic as far as that goes. And then we'd be, you know, and at that point, we'd just back up, hook up to the trailer and take it down, and then bring it back, put it back outside.
Okay.
How many units do you have in total, or what do you have, expect to have?
At this point, how many do we have?
Yes. You said a trailer holds six, if it's.
Yeah, when we have a couple on back. I think we have eight units altogether at this point.
And eight, eight of what?
It'd be four kayaks, four stand-up paddleboards, and one canoe.
And what would be your intention, how many would you, ideally, how many would you have?
I don't know. I guess, yeah, I mean, it'd basically be, I mean, if it demands high, then, you know, we'd maybe go up higher. But I don't think we'd go to any extensive amount. We're not talking 40 or 50 or anything like that. I don't see that happening. It might get up to 20. And if we got to that point, I'd be happy. But I don't see it going, you know, at this point.
Any other questions of the commission before we go into the public hearing?
No.
Whoops. You may sit down, please. Appreciate your comments there. We'll go on now into the public hearing portion of the application. So, anyone wishing to make comments, please fill out your comment card. You will have three minutes to make your comments, and please speak clearly into the microphone.
All right, we'll start with Brian Egger.
I'm Brian Egger. I live at 5911 North M-88. I'm Brian Egger. I live at 5911 North M-88, which happens to be two lots west of the north public landing. And there are many days in the summer that there is traffic on 88 that the parking lot is filled. And that leads me to ask about, will the customers be parking at your building, or will they be parking up at the north end?
So, we're going to restrict comments to the commission. That's quite all right. But just procedurally, just address your comments to me or to the commission. We'll keep track of your comments, and then we'll come back and ask the applicant questions. So, could you paraphrase your question again, please?
The parking at the north end in the summertime, not just the weekends or the holidays, can be very full, that they park on 88. My question is, are the people who are renting the kayaks, are they following the trailer up to the north end and parking there, and then riding, and then load the kayak back on the trailer, and then do they go home? That's my first question. My second question, I'm not sure if the DNR site is available for commercial businesses. And that's what this is. This is a commercial business. This isn't a family who take their private kayak out on Torch Lake. This is a commercial business that is renting kayaks. And I don't know if that's legal to do that. My other question is that he said he had eight total units now, maybe more. Perhaps if the planning commission leans toward giving this, that there'd be a number put in. So, it couldn't be 40, or 50, or 60, or 100, because that could be a bad thing. And as I understand it, these special use permits stay with the property. So, they may only have 20, but the next owner may want to put in 100. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Charles Goosen.
Charles, I'll just go ahead and remind you to speak directly into the mic, so somebody else doesn't.
My name is Charles Goosen. I actually served on this commission for 10 or 12 years. Boy, a lot has changed. You've got nice name tags, you've got candy. I'm jealous. Anyway, back to business at hand, I am not in favor of this. I am a business guy, and I love to support entrepreneurs so that they can make a living and make some money. In this particular case, we have a very, we have two very finite resources. One, the township park over here, which, I don't know if you all have been there in the summertime, but it's an absolute zoo. And the north end of the lake is probably not much better than that. Because of that, I love the fact that somebody's coming up with ideas to generate revenue and so forth. But in this particular case, with such a limited capacity at both of those ramps, I'd be very, I would, I'm not in favor of such a, approving such a request.
Thank you.
John Garrison.
Hello, my name's John Garrison. We have a place over off of, right by Pine Hill and Kruger Road, actually. That ends at the water's edge, along with many other roads. Paddle Antrim went around and put signage up. Last year, we had an episode, well, several actually, where people come up and they park on our access that we own, that we're also liable for. Somebody slips and falls walking down our stairway, through our little section of woods to get to our beach. Somebody in a small SUV with a 31 scoop sticker on the window, actually parked right on our grass, walked right out on our dock. And when one of residents that is also an owner of that lot said, excuse me, can we help you? Here, can I help you? They said, we're just around here looking. And they walked to the end of our dock between our boats, looking around, and then they just went off. What's going to happen when they rent out kayaks and these launches are full, and somebody puts it on their vehicle, and they see that, oh, the road end goes there? We can just pull up, park somewhere, take our paddleboat or paddleboard or kayaks, whatever. I'm not really opposed to them doing something like this to a limited capacity, like somebody else mentioned, maybe limited to a certain amount of people, not just a certain amount of kayaks, so that they can, you know, increase in business. A little bit of tourism's not a bad thing, but too much? I mean, honestly, we bought property and built a place up here, not at the south end of the lake for reasons. We like this area. We like it how it is. You know, granted, building our house added, you know, a couple more people, a couple more friends come up and visit us. But we kind of like it how it is. And growth is a good thing at a limited capacity, so we don't exceed and start ruining what we do have that we have nice around here. So, I mean, I guess my concern would be when they rent out these kayaks and they allow somebody else to load them and take them off on their vehicle, how do we keep them from abusing these road ends where you can't park? Because I will be the first person that, some, one of my neighbors lets me know there's a car down there, calling the sheriff, getting yanked right now. I mean, we don't need people slipping and falling. We had somebody that, a friend of one of the people that's on our dock, actually slipped off our dock, scratched their leg up, took a couple stitches. I don't need one of their people coming over here, walking out, slipping, getting cut up. Now, we're getting sued. It's a liability standpoint for us. And these DNR access points, is it, are they talking just the day park and just the north end, or is it, are they talking Barnes Road, Kruger Road, Third Street, all these road ends that end along the lake? And where are these people that think they're going to park, they're going to put their cars right in our grass? I guess that's all I got.
Thank you for your comments.
Alan Dobziniak? All right.
I think, my name is Alan Dobziniak. We live on the lake off Michindo Lane. And we spend a lot of time, both at the north.
Can you please put it up a little closer?
Okay. We spend a lot of time, both at the north end and at the township park, loading and unloading boats during the summer. And those are probably the two most congested areas at the north end of the lake. And to add to that congestion, when you see people backed up trying to get their boats off the lake, and the same thing happens at the north end of the lake. So, there are periods of time when the congestion is very significant. People who don't know the lake and don't understand that, who are in these other non-motorized vehicles, are going to simply contribute, I think, to that degree of congestion. And there's also a lot of water sports that take place there, also water skiing, wakeboarding. And again, those areas, because they're convenient to the ramp, are areas that can, that get considerable use. So, like many of the other people who have spoken, I'm very concerned about the congestion, that this could. that this could potentially add. At six or eight, probably not that great. But at 20, I think that would be very significant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lyle Johnston.
My name is, is Lyle Johnston. I live at the end of Third Street. And for those of you who are older, you can remember that there was a lot of legal problems over the Third Street road ending. And I can tell you that the cost of a lawyer, portal to portal, from Traverse City is $175 an hour. Now, after $15,000 worth of expenses, the Third Street road end was, it was sort of sewn up. The township was gonna mow it, there's gonna be no picnicking, no parking, everything like that. But that has been a bone of contention, really, really nasty contention. And people ought to keep that in mind, because there's, there's an agreement with the township on what's, what's gonna happen there, and what's not gonna happen there. And I just, reminding everybody of that. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
I believe we've got everybody that noted they wanted to speak about scoops, but I could be wrong.
Yes, please bring your comment card forward.
Thank you, Tom Joseph.
My name's Tom Joseph. I live at 2464 U.S. Highway 31 North, which is about 10th of a mile that way. I guess I would just like the planning commission and the business person to consider what happened on the south end in the last two years. There used to be a Facebook advertising for the Torch Tiki business. What did he do? He started off renting kayaks and paddleboards. Now, unlike this situation, he used his own front yard, he lived on Crystal Beach Road, and he used the public launch to access the lake. And he also tried to do a food cart on the water. It caused a lot of problem for the neighbors, it caused a liability problem for the owner. And the bottom line is, whenever you try to mix public access and a commercial business, or a public access commercial business on residential lots, you end up with a lot of problems. They ended up having to cease and desist the man, and he lost a lot of money, because all the inventory he purchased, he could no longer rent out. My advice to you is, if you're going to pursue a commercial business, you need a commercial access to the lake to run a commercial business on the lake. That way, you can make it a successful business venture and not interfere with other uses of the lake, whether it's residential or public access. Just consider that. And best of luck to you.
Thank you. Laura, are there any other comments, or anybody else from the audience that would like to come forward?
Don't believe so, not for this one.
So, Sarah, as far as written correspondence is concerned, we had a number of items submitted in relation to this.
Yeah, there's a couple of items on your desk, two letters that were on your desk that has a couple of pictures on the front. And the pictures were taken by staff here, just to show kind of the location of where, where they want to put the trailer. And the screening, or the buffering, because they had mentioned in their response that there was some screening there. Couple of letters there. And then there were a couple of letters in your packet. These are ones that you received for last month's meeting that we had to cancel because we didn't have a quorum. So, those are the same letters. So, these two additional letters are just since your last packet.
Okay. So, I guess we can now close the public hearing for the 31 Scoops special use permit application, and move into review, discussion, and deliberation of the commission and a potential decision. So, I guess, Sarah, I've got a number of questions here, as I'm sure the, the commission members do as well. Before we kind of dive into that, is any, can you give us kind of a summary of your view of the application, what you see, and kind of walk us through both the standards that you've matched things up against, and then things that the commission should consider?
Sure, absolutely. And I'll give you just a little bit of brief history. They were here, the applicant was here in January, at our January meeting, and did a presentation, and told us a little bit about their business. And the planning commission had some questions, and that's what kind of spurred the additional information that they provided to you in writing, telling you a little bit more about their business. And then they also did respond to the staff report in there, and kind of wrote in answers to help address some of those items. So, I took, you know, that information that was supplied to the township, and then revised my staff report, you know, which was in your packet. There are a couple of items, I think, that are still outstanding to the site plan. And I, I did propose conditions at the end, if you decide you want to move forward with an approval. A couple of them are fairly minor, having to do with the lot size for that residential lot. And I guess, let me back up a second, just, there's the commercial lot where Scoops is, and that's where they're gonna have the trailer and run the business. But a couple of lots south of that is a residential property that they also have as a part of this application, where my understanding is, they're gonna store the trailer at night on that residential piece. It is zoned village business, but it's currently used with, as a dwelling on that property. So, I tried to break the report up in commercial and residential lots, so you knew where I was talking about. But at the same time, sometimes, you know, I might, might have forgot one, or you think about one lot, not the other lot. So, just to keep both places in mind when we're reviewing the application and what's needed. So, getting back into the application, one of the items I mentioned last time was about the screening, and the planning commission, you know, briefly talked about it. And the applicant provided more documentation, and, and their response is that there is existing screening on the site. I would caution the planning commission with that statement, just because all of the screening exists on neighboring properties, doesn't exist on the applicant's properties. So, specifically, the commercial properties, there's talk about a, a building or an accessory structure that's on the neighbor's property. And then there's some additional trees in that are kind of arborvit-y, or something similar to that. And my understanding is that's on the neighboring property as well. And so, the planning commission should talk about screening in that buffering, if there's anything that you'd like to see for when that trailer's sitting on the site there. So, most of my comments are related to that. We do need a little bit of setback information. I don't think that that's an issue for the application, it's just it's required to be on the site plan, it's not there. I think it should be added. And then, as far as the standards, which start on page 15 of 19 of my report, at Section 5, just to throw this out there, as the planning commission's aware, all of the standards have to be met for the site plan and the special use in order to grant the approval for this permit. So, a lot of the standards, I do have a satisfied, there are some of them that are partially satisfied. One of them has to do with that loading zone. I think that those spots should be striped, so that they're always available as a loading area. They have more than the required number of parking spaces, so I don't think that's an issue. I just, you know, I do feel like that should be delineated. I don't know if you want to have any discussion about maybe signage in a certain area for, if people are gonna leave their vehicles there. Maybe it makes sense to, you know, have along that south line, that's where people park if they're gonna leave their vehicles and, you know, go to the launch. But I guess we should also ask the applicant what their plan is. That was something that came up during public comment, too, is if somebody's, you know, they're dropping the boat off for an individual, how's that individual getting? Where are they getting there? Where are they parking? What does that look like? Screening, again. And I think those are my major comments for the application. You know, there's been a lot of public comment, and I know that even the planning, I've had a couple called from planning commissioners about road ends and the public launches, and, and how to deal with those. And so, you recall at the January meeting, the planning commission had concerns about the day park, and suggested the applicant, you know, talk to the township about how that functions. You know, and the day park's not interested in the committee anyways, any kind of, you know, partnership or exception. I mean, they would be treated just like anybody else that wanted to use the launch, as far as paying, waiting in line, using the launch. There's no intent in putting in a separate kind of kayak canoe launch in down at the day park. And really, you know, suggested that they look somewhere else. The DNR launch site, that is a public site. I don't know the rules of the DNR. And if they have to have a certain permission or not to use that, that would be up to them. From our perspective, we could put a condition on that says that they're required to obtain proper permits. But that is something for, you know, the state to enforce, as far as the use of their launch. That's not something under the jurisdiction of the township. And then the road ends, those are public road ends, and should be used how road ends need to be used. Most of the time, people don't know what that is. And perhaps the township could utilize some signage or something individually for each road end, or no parking signs. I know that the supervisor's been talking about that at a different spot, that hasn't been mentioned for different reasons. But that's kind of working, too, with the road commission for no parking signs, and how that all functions. So, you know, I would caution the planning commission in getting too involved in kind of those public areas, as far as if somebody has an individual boat on their car and saying they can't take it somewhere, I don't think that's within our powers to, to do that. I think you can think about it in your review, and see if it might be an increased burden. But as far as saying, no one can launch from there, or some sort of restriction, you know, I don't think that's something we have the power at the planning commission level to control.
So, question on the road ends. So, there are a number of road ends throughout the township, some on Torch Lake, some on Grand Traverse Bay. So, help me understand a little bit more on what is allowed or not allowed on those road ends?
You know, road ends, they're, they're like public access to the water. And it depends on the road end. I don't, I'm not familiar with if the township has a specific ordinance related to any of the road ends. Honestly, if there's, you know, sometimes there's additional things that can happen at road ends, or limitations, or, you know, some are used for launching, some are not used for launching, some are, you know, they have parking areas, some don't have parking areas. But, you know, as far, as far as just in general, you know, road ends are open to the public to access the water in some form.
Okay. So, just open it up to the commission for, for questions.
I kind of, I have a, do we, do we have, like, different rules at the end of Third Street? Do we know what Mr. Johnston's talking about?
There is a, an agreement, I'm trying to think of the right word, related to Third Street, that we did find in a file. But that would be, you know, a private agreement. That's still a road end, that's open to the public.
So, so, there's one specific road that has a particular agreement?
Let me, I can look it up while you guys discuss.
Yes, if you could look that up and discuss. Other questions from the commission? So, Sarah, procedurally, we are not allowed to gauge with the audience, correct?
Right, you can ask questions of the audience, but it doesn't open up public comments, and it's not like a discussion item. It's, here's my question.
We can ask a specific question of somebody in the audience?
If you'd like to.
Sir, if you, you're raising your hand, if you have some information on that, that would be helpful. When you come forward, could you please state your name again?
My name is Lyle Johnston. I live at the, at the Third Street, excuse me, Third Street Road End. And quickly stating what happened, there were trees in the road end. And one of them, branch fell down and almost hit my wife. We then asked the, asked the county road commission, you were saying the road commission controls everything. We asked the road commission for permission to replace the trees. And we got a written permission from them to replace the trees. And we sent a letter to the board, and the board said they had no opinion. And so, we put in three trees. And the same day, the road, the board came down and told me, and told us, and told my lawyer, that the county road commission was no longer handling the road ends, that they were now the, under the purview of the you folks. So, it's not, it's not the road commission. The, the township supposedly now controls Third Street Road End. And there is no constable, so that's what caused a whole bunch of real bad problems.
Can you please, okay, so, so, thank you.
Yeah. Sorry to break in, but...
So, and my only comment about the road commission is that the township has agreed, basically, that they control it. But the road commission controls the public road and parking on a public road, and no parking signs. The township can't go up and put no parking signs, it has to be done in connection with Antrim County Road Commission. So, there was an agreement with the township and the neighbors, as he mentioned, and it's kind of to me, it's in the status quo. You know, there was some paving that was gonna be done, a dead-end road sign that was gonna be put in. And all that this is, is a letter from the neighbor's attorney to the township. I don't have a signed agreement where everybody agreed, it's not recorded in court. If there is that, I don't have that documentation.
So, Barbara, to your question about understanding more of the parties of that particular agreement, I think is pertinent.
Sarah, I've got one question in your report. It talks about agency reviews, and there are four that says aren't received. Do we expect them to be received? Are they required with the application?
We've not received them. There is the, an email in your packet where the applicant reached out to them. You know, that's one of the hard things to deal with, is that we can't force an outside agency to provide us documentation. That's why, you know, one of the conditions I have on here is outside agency permits required before a land use permit. I'm not sure there's anything that would be required. There's no, you know, earthwork being done, so no soil erosion. As far as MDOT and that, there's nothing being done to the curbing, you know, there. So, I don't really see that there probably is, but that's kind of my catch-all, in case, you know, that kind of, they can go out to those agencies and go, I got approval, I need you to tell me I'm okay, or I'm not okay.
Yeah, when I listen to the public comments, I think the, the agency review that might be worthwhile is the fire department. We've, you know, I'll boil down when I make a decision what I think the issues are, but safety is one of them. And the safety, particularly along public dock road and Third Street. And the fire department would probably weigh in and determine whether some number of rentals would increase the concern, congestion on that street. But I think with the other agency reviews, if they're not received, I'm not sure that we would expect them. So, either fire department, I don't, I don't think it's health department, MDOT, or soil erosion.
I'm interested in pursuing, I think that there are a couple comments from the community, and I actually had it written down, I just forgot to say anything, about the use, the DNR use. Because I had a friend talk about that you can't have commercial fishing from a DNR. So, I did write that down. Okay, if you can't have... So I did write that down. Okay, if you can't have commercial fishing, can you have other commercial endeavors? And a couple of people did ask that. So I think it was your suggestion that maybe they get a sign off on the DNR. I would think that that would be advisable to do.
Yeah, and I think that would be that one of those outside agency permits or some sort of a letter from the DNR. You know, again, the township doesn't enforce the DNR rules. So we have this kind of fine line of, you know, what that looks like. Or if somebody drives their car over there with one of their boats on it, you know what that looks like.
But if they're, if they're commercially carrying kayaks or paddle boats or paddle boards there, there is commerce being, I don't know, I think it's a fine line and I think it's worth, I wouldn't want them to be permitted and then get shut down. You can't use this area. So I'd rather that it be, that they know for sure that that's a place that they can go.
And I think that we can definitely throw that, make that a specific, you know, a DNR letter or something related to that. So that they're aware of it, you know, DNR is aware of it, the applicant's aware of it.
What do all these dock and hoist companies do? I mean, that's commercial. They all have that permit? I mean, I know they all use our accesses and that's commercial, they're making money.
Which ones, Jason?
Dock and hoist, there's probably quite a few of us in here that hire companies, commercial companies to put our dock and hoist in. So I guess I would look at it that way, too. Yeah, but they're using the public launches to haul a hoist or put a boat in. Yeah, a lot of people like their docks inside their garage, so they have to haul it down and unload at the, at the launch. I know Torch Lake Township charges though for, I think they pay, I don't know, three, four, five hundred dollars a year to use it.
Yeah, they would, if they go into the bay, they sometimes go in through all crap as in they bring a barge down or whatever.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess I just, you know, kind of have an open, open mind when you talk about commercial using public access.
Other questions of the commission?
I think if this does get passed or whichever, I think there needs to be a limit on the kayaks myself.
Do you have?
Yes. I think, you know, if we are willing to give them a try, start small, and if it works out, maybe they can have more next year or, or something. But I, you know, I think maybe 20 is a little too much. That's just my personal opinion.
Can we get an answer to the whole parking as far as that, will they be transporting customers with the kayak or whatever to the launch so that they don't have to park down there or how that will be handled?
Yes, in fact, that's a good point. Let's, if the applicant would please come forward. Could you walk us through detailed, when a customer comes in and how that would work? And you get a batch of customers and you got, a trailer of six, you had mentioned, inconceivably. How does that work again? Where do they park when they come into your store?
Depends on each case. A lot of times people like to get together and they all ride down in like one vehicle. They can leave the other ones in our parking lot. Or they might, you know, depending, it's like when you go on a canoe trip down the river. You have one person goes down, the other end parks, and the other one stay here. So basically you just transport the canoes, kayaks down and, you know, unload the canoes, kayaks. And you just have, if you only have a few, we'll take them down in our vehicle. So they can leave it there, so it doesn't add to any congestion. If they have a bunch of them, like you said, then they may have to take one other car down and we load some in our vehicle also. Yeah, that's true, too.
So if, if somebody, if somebody comes in, where would you recommend that they launch?
The north end, or if they have a private place, they could do that. We've already been advised that they don't want any extra traffic down at the day park. You know, if they did come down, they'd have to stand in line with everybody else. But it's also not any different than, like you said, as other people use it for a commercial business. Several mariners go down there and launch boats all the time. And then like you said, the boat launch, the docks like that, that's all it makes it's, you know, but we're trying to minimize that so not add any more headaches. So.
So Sarah, question on the, thank you, sir. Question on the whole road ends again. And the question was raised where somewhat in the audience about liability, a concern that they had liability for somebody at the road end. How does that work? Can you, you have any sense for that?
No, I mean, it would be just like any other general, you know, general public that would use it. It's, you know, if it's a road end and it's public property, I don't, I guess I don't know. If it falls on township's liability, whoever wants to sue for, whoever for whatever, you know. I don't know how that works. If it's private property, that's a, that's a different issue. You know, that, I don't know, I guess I don't know how, from a township perspective, we would be able to regulate those road ends or where people go or how people behave in, you know, in the public realm. You know, if, if I rent a boat and I go down to a road end, I'm just like anybody else, if it's my boat or not my boat. I also understand, you know, not encouraging people to use, use those properties. But they, it is public property that everybody gets to use for free, you know, for free. Essentially, there's no charge to, to utilize that property.
Okay.
You know, and there are a lot of other road ends, Torch Lake specifically. You know, Torch Lake has a lot of road ends. There's multiple jurisdictions around Torch Lake as well. Some of them do have better launch areas, you know, maybe not in Torch Lake. But there's other, in different municipalities that have better road ends that would be better utilized to launch.
And how about the bay on the road that heads straight west from 31 Scoops? What is that area down there, right on the bay? Need to preserve?
Yeah, and there is a little bit of access down there as a road end, I believe, too. There's a couple of parking spaces, you know, but just like a regular, any other road end.
And who maintains that area?
I don't know that answer.
Okay. I'm sorry, say that again, please.
Can you stand up at the microphone?
Yep.
There's a provision in the agreement that you can't launch into the bay.
In which agreement?
Our agreement. You cannot launch into the bay.
Yeah, can you, when you say agreement, though, with, with?
You and between who else?
Yeah, who? Oh, I see, your rental agreement, okay. I see.
Do we have, was that part of the packet?
I don't remember seeing that.
Cool to see. You have it? Do you happen to have the rental agreement?
So we've got, I think, a number of items here outstanding of questions that I think are open. Sarah, there was, there's some criteria we're supposed to use when we are evaluating one of these. I think there's like six or eight different criteria. Are those printed out somewhere in this packet?
Yeah, it starts on page 15 of 19 of my staff report. It's near the beginning of your packet. That starts with your site plan review standards are the first group of standards there. And then the special use standards following that. So, yeah, I would encourage the Planning Commission to kind of walk through each of the standards, have a little bit of discussion. I've proposed some draft findings. These are just a starting point. So add, take away, change, do whatever you want to do, but kind of just spot to think about and start the discussion.
Okay, so before we go into each of these standards for discussion, are there any other broad questions from the commission? Yes, sir.
Can you stand up at the microphone, please?
Certainly. Charles Goosen, 3933 Circle, and I'm sorry I didn't say that earlier. Point of clarity, the commercial entities that use both the Torch Lake Township ramp and I believe the DNR ramp are people that typically put docks in. And that's usually done about this time of year. Doubtful there's going to be too many kayak renters this time of year because you got to get wet to get into the kayak. Usually, I'll go back to what I said earlier, it's a finite resource. And the time that, that rental would be popular is going to be at the extreme use of those two ramps. Just a personal comment on the road ends. I know, being on the Planning Commission for 10 or 12 years, we spent an inordinate amount of time writing ordinances about funneling. Just be aware of that, that you might be on a slippery slope by, and I don't know what the, the parking regulations are on a road end, that's definitely worth checking out. But you don't want to incent others to start overusing road ends more on a permanent basis. Just a personal comment, so.
Thank you. So commission, let's move into the discussion of each of the round standards here. Beginning on page 15 of 19. So each site plan shall conform to all applicable provisions of the zoning orders and standards listed below. So item one is, be efficiently organized in relation to topography, size of lot, and so forth. Partially satisfied according to Sarah's findings. Seem like we did need some clarification there on the parking.
Yeah, that has to do with those loading spaces and having them delineated.
Are they agreeing to do that?
Any questions of the commission? Does the commission agree that the first one is partially satisfied, subject to the conditions that are prescribed here?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, mine was striping. I didn't think, you know, I didn't do the signage part of it, but you could do both of them. I mean, the Planning Commission, whatever you feel comfortable with for delineating that space.
So we could require both signage and striping?
I mean, I think both of that would be, would be good. You know, I think that gives two, two visual ways to still have people parking a loading zone, I guess.
Okay, so if we make it subject to signing and striping. Sarah, do we, are we required to go through and vote on each one of these criteria or just make sure that everybody?
No, just general consensus unless you get one that gets a hot topic.
Anybody that would disagree with that being satisfied. Okay, let's move to number two.
Oh, I did put that in the condition. I didn't put that up in the standard.
Landscape shall be preserved by minimizing tree and soil removal and topographic modifications which result in maximum harmony with adjacent areas. Because they haven't changed any of the landscaping. Anyone disagree that that's satisfied? Item two. Yeah, I think that, that will have to come up later. Yeah, there is the privacy.
I didn't throw it in number two just because it talks about maintaining or preserving to minimize tree removal. So that's why I didn't add the additional buffering and screening in there.
Okay, so anyone, any issues with number two? Let's move on to number three, stormwater managed and disposed of. There's no impact on this, it doesn't appear to be, so no changes to the site versus what it is. Any concerns about that? Number three. Okay, move on to number four. This is where the screening comes in, Barb, that you just mentioned. There were definitely some concerns over screening. Now, this here is pertains to the screening of both the site and what about the home where storage is?
It would apply to both, so whatever the Planning Commission feels that you need for either location. And you can, it can be different. It doesn't have to be the same screening at both, whatever you're comfortable with.
So we need some additional screening here. What is, how does the commission feel? Should it be a fence? Should it be, because right now, at least at the site where the, by 31 Scoops itself, all of the screening is provided by the neighboring homeowners. So if those trees, it would be up to them to put something in to replace what's there. So it should not be up to them to have to do that.
Right, I think I'm most concerned about is the neighbor decides to take down all of that screening that's on that side of the property.
Right.
Would that be replaced or that that side of the property again be screened by the 31 Scoops people?
Right. Sorry.
Can you talk into the microphone up here, please?
Our understanding, the screening that exists between Sonny and us is shared. It is not just exclusively theirs. And they're the ones who actually put it in when they put the store in, when they bought the store and added on.
But Sarah, in your observations, was the, is the screening actually, who's, on whose property is that screening on?
It appears to be on the neighbor's property.
Okay.
But I don't know, I mean, if it's, if it's, I don't know how you can jointly own screening. I mean, I guess if it's on the property line, you own half of it and your neighbor owns the other half.
Right, I think the, the concern is, is that if those trees go away and. And that's. No, and I, and I, we can understand that. I think the concern is what happens if, it shouldn't necessarily be the homeowner's adjacent, you know, adjacent to your property to have to keep a screening up to not see the canoe storage there. That's, I think that's what the commission is stating here. So I think item number four, if we were to put in requirement of additional screening, the question is, that could be, what are the options? It could be shrubbery, it could be fencing.
Yeah, it could, yeah, you could do some sort of privacy fencing that, I don't know, you know, I don't know exactly how tall the trailer is, if you're trying to hide the whole trailer or if you want to do some sort of evergreen screening to try to, to cover it up. The issue is going to be the height, so trying to get that height out of it. And if they, if you do landscaping, how long you would give to be fully enclosed, so.
Our ordinance says either, right? It says either, either structure or plant material.
Right.
And I understand what you're saying about the history. You've got an application to bring in a new use, there's going to be, there's going to be boats parked there and the neighbors want them to be screened. So I think it can be plant or fence, but I think screening would be one of the conditions you'd, in my opinion, for, for my support, you'd need to approve to.
Next question.
Are we referring to where, just where the trailer's going to be parked?
At the moment, yes, but we were also, there were concerns over the storage up the street at the home as well.
Okay, so just where the trailer's being parked, not from the store to Sonny's house, not right there?
I think we're talking this, this area.
Okay, we're good.
Here on these pictures.
Are the kayaks being stored on the trailer or is there something?
Are the kayaks being stored on the trailer, or is there something separate that's being left there where the kayaks are staying? Do we know?
It'd be both.
Okay.
They're big stuff, so then there's, if there's twenty, they cannot put on there.
And would the, would customers be within that area, or they're going to be in the parking area being loaded? I'm just wondering, because I'm thinking noise. Is, is there any more noise with these people coming in than would normally be there if I was going to get ice cream and using your parking lot?
Not much at work. They aren't going to be stored at the store. I mean, whatever fits on the trailer. But we also, underneath the trailer, is our whole property.
Can you come up to the microphone? The issue is, there's people watching on YouTube, they can't hear when you don't speak into the microphone.
Underneath our trailer, where it's going to be parked, is our whole entire septic system, so obviously, we're not putting plant material under that, or digging a permanent fence of any kind. I mean, that's not going to happen.
But there, at the, at the border of the actual property, right up along the adjacent property line there, there should be a spot to do some kind of screening, because even your septic wouldn't go all the way up to that. There should be at least some setback, I would think.
There's already plant material there. It just hasn't grown in yet. I took it.
Yes.
I took the pictures, and I believe it was in March. I'm not positive. Could have been April. Whenever Jackie asked me to take them, the plant, plants hadn't grown in yet. I mean, they're probably just starting now. There's several grasses and stuff that get about this tall.
Well, I think, I think what we'll have to do is, we'll have to put a condition in here about screening of some sort, be to either plant or fencing, to make sure that it's not the responsibility of the existing neighbors to, to screen that. We'll have to look at that.
Is that something that you want her, just them to work with staff on, or is that something that you want the planning commission to review?
What does the planning commission feel on that?
If we're clear that we want screening, we don't want the neighbors having to provide it, then staff should be able to work with them and figure out what to begin there.
I agree.
Is this screening just for trespassing?
It would be, it's to meet this condition about protection enhancement of the property and the privacy of the occupants. So, protection of the neighboring properties, essentially.
Couple of no trespassing signs?
Well, I don't think the issue is worrying about, you know, their, their business, their customers. I don't think that's the issue. It's more about providing screening of the outdoor storage area.
So people aren't standing there waiting for their kayak, looking in the window of the neighboring?
Right, or more so, so nobody has to look at the kayaks that are sitting outside.
So we just got to hide the trailer.
On the trailer.
Right.
Could the extra storage be clarified for me? And what, it's, it's going to be on the residential property? And then what are we asking as the parameters for screening there? I'm, I'm a little confused on that.
Yeah, we haven't really talked about the screening for the residential component, but I think the applicant can explain what they're looking to do with the residential piece.
The kayaks and stuff would be pulled from the business down to our home in our driveway, which currently has a grapevine that grows, my God, I don't know, taller than the ceiling. And the rest of them will probably be put in our garage.
And Sarah, has there been, there's been some interaction with the client, with the applicant already regarding screening around the residential, correct?
No, we haven't talked about anything, just whatever's in this report.
Okay.
I mean, do we need screening for them to park on their own property? I mean, there's several commercial trucks that park in private residence overnight.
It was just a question about whether or not, I, I thought it heard something about that there had been some back and forth between the applicant and, and the staff here. So if we, to round out number four, if we have fencing that, or some kind of screening, either fencing or...
Plant material.
Plant material, then we'll, we'll be fine. Anybody have a concern, or any commission members have a concern with that? Not, we'll move on to item five. All buildings and groups of buildings shall be so arranged as to emergency vehicle access. Satisfied there's no buildings proposed, or no new buildings proposed? Any commission members have questions on that one, or concerns? If not, move on to number six. Every structure or dwelling unit shall have access to a street, walkway, or other area dedicated to common use. Shown here as satisfied. Any questions? Okay, number seven. There should be provided a pedestrian circulation system which is insulated from the vehicular circulation system. That's satisfied. We haven't, we haven't changed that here in this case, have we?
No, I mean, there's been, because there's no site changes at all.
Any, any concerns about number seven? Moving on to number eight. All loading and unloading areas and outside storage areas, including areas for the storage of trash, which faces or is visible from residential districts or public thoroughfares, shall be screened by a vertical screen consisting of structural or plant materials no less than eight feet in height. This is partly satisfied. So this is, goes back to the screening again. What's the difference between this particular screening criteria and the last one we just talked about?
It's similar, but a little bit different. I, you know, I didn't, I didn't write the sections of the ordinance, I'm just dealing with what's in here, so.
Well, so, so your comment is, is in there about the need to look at both commercial site and residential site. I, I'm with Jason. I, I think there's going to be equipment on the, on the business site that doesn't exist now, that the neighbors don't want to have to see. I don't know that the application, or even our decision, has anything to do with what happens on the residential site where they store it. I don't think, I don't think the application, or, or we're trying to legislate being a good neighbor or not. Now, I know one of the, one of the public comments we got emailed to has had some pictures of the site now, but I'm making the decision on the application for the business, and where they're stored, when they're not on the site. Is that really a part of what our decision is? Because that's what's written here under the comment, so there's need to look at both commercial site and residential site. I think screening should be provided on the commercial site.
So Sarah, the, what is your perspective on the kind of interconnection between the commercial and the residential site?
I mean, I would argue that there, they would both apply, the screening would apply to both sites, because you're approving this use, you're approving that storage on another, on another parcel, they're both being used in the operation of the business, and they're both within Torch Lake Township. You know, the, the planning commission can disagree or not find that screening's needed. Maybe it would be appropriate, if you're going to go down that, that route, to say that they, it has to be parked in the driveway, at least, so it functions like everybody else's yard, versus being parked, you know, out next to the road, or in the grass. I don't, I don't know, I'm just thinking of some, you know, if you're saying that this is a residential piece, I mean, I, some people do have a canoe trailer that they have all their canoes on that they take when they go and use it, but this is a function of a business as well. So that's why I think it has a little bit higher level where you could require something on their residential piece.
I do tend to weigh in on the side of, of what Bill and Jason said here, that, you know, we have a specific notion of the business itself and the commercial application. So what does, for any resident that has, if they have an accumulation of stuff that is unsightly, irrespective of anything going on in this particular, what is our, what, what does the township do as far as an ordinance? And what controls would there be in place to help manage something like that?
Well, if you're just a regular residential property, you know, owner, we have the zoning ordinance, which deals with some components. We have a nuisance or blight ordinance that would deal with any junk accumulation. You know, as far as this, if you're approving the storage of this commercial venture on the residential property, we have a site plan that you always have to live by, and that also is imposed upon, you know, the next individual that owns that property. So that's something to think about with the special use that continues on. Should they sell one or both of the properties to someone else, and they want to continue to do this, they may have different ideas about where they want to store their boat, or, or, I'm sorry, this trailer, or what that looks like. So that would be my only kind of additional concern, is to make sure we know exactly where it's stored on this residential piece and what that looks like.
How does the commission feel about making the condition that the units are stored on the driveway versus some other place, place on the property?
You said stored where, as opposed to the residential property?
Basically in the driveway between the house and the 31, so it wouldn't be behind where the neighbors are.
Right. If it's on the residential piece, it would need to be in the driveway.
Yes.
Like a vehicle.
Okay.
How does anyone else feel about that?
Does that go for everybody in the township, or just the...
Just that application. You have some stuff stored out back, don't you? In, in your setbacks.
Well, no, but I mean, I'm not going to be naked, but there's a big irrigation company guy down here, he drains his equipment home every night, because it's just quicker to come home than go to, while it's back to Traverse City.
So that's why I'm, I'm just...
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me. Sir, do you have a comment? Please.
If you're still taking comments, this gentleman down too, I thought you had closed.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
My concern, as it comes to, you're, you're talking about screening and so forth. If we focus our attention only on this business and these kayaks and so forth, what about the next business who has kayaks or boats, and they choose to store them on their personal property somewhere down the lake? Once you've said yes here, you've opened up Pandora's Box. You know, the phrase, once the camel knows in the tent, the whole camel's coming in the tent, and the rest of them are coming in too.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get your name, please?
My name's Mike Healy, 2530 Legacy Woods Trail.
Thank you. One other commenter.
Jay Garrison, 508 Whitefish Trail. Two comments. One is, back to the road ends a little bit, with the, if it's going to start requiring residences to have to put up a bunch of no trespassing signs and stuff, I mean, who wants to see those, whether they're pretty ones or ugly ones? You know, and then the, it's not a big cost, but it's another cost that it's going to put on other people. And the other one is, are we double using a section of their property? They said something about parking the trailer on their septic system. If that piece of property's already, that section is designated to be a septic system, and now you create traffic over it, you're going to, you're allowing that field to fail early, which is not, that's a health department issue, but you're basically allowing them to double, double use a section of that property. It's designated to be set aside for the septic system. Not to be walked over, driven over, you can't put parking lot over it, it needs evaporation rate, you know, the business is going to have X amount of water coming out of it, you know, again, health department concerns, but if you allow them to park this trailer over that, and there are canoes and kayaks and paddleboards, now you have impervious of, you know, plastic things setting all over the lawn, not allowing, on a nice sunny day, for evaporation rate to happen. And all the foot traffic and vehicle traffic is also going to cause it to fail early. That's why it's set aside to be a septic system, not a parking area, you know, for trailers or, you know, general constant use.
Thank you for your comments.
I think, I think that if, if you're doing public comments, there's more.
We, yes, we, this, this will be the last public comment, because we've, this is getting longer.
Sure. Thank you for taking this late. My name is Dan Wright, I'm at 2590 Legacy Woods Trail, and I just wanted to reinforce some of the safety concerns. The gentleman referred to the day park as a zoo, and that's being very kind. You know, there's no supervision at the day park, there's a lot of issues with overcrowding. I think most residents that are close to the day park will tell you that we've seen swimmers well beyond the swim area, we've seen kayakers and paddleboards within the swim area, mix that all with very powerful boats nearby. It's a concern when you add in another variable here that's exacerbating all that, and I just wanted to point that out. If the day park is busy, there's no stopping a renter from walking it down and launching it into the swim area. It's not anything that the business owners would encourage, but you're not going to stop that. You know, it's a zoo, it's more than a zoo. It's, there's no control, no supervision, nothing. So I wanted to enforce the safety concerns. I'm sure it's similar at the North Park, I'm not as familiar with that, and I, I just also reinforced at the day park how that, how this all fits in with the master plan. I think there's a number of areas that conflict with this business, with that day park master plan, and I hadn't heard that stated yet tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so for number eight, we talked about the condition of parking in the driveway. Is that, any more comments on that one?
I'll give it up.
Yeah. I do think that the, the comments, Sarah, that we just heard regarding the whole septic, I mean, it's an interesting concern. You know, I, is the health department weighing on that, or how does that impact? I mean, is it our job to decide whether or not they can park, or people park on septic systems all over the place?
I, I, I mean, I'm pretty sure you're not going to want people on your, I mean, I know I wouldn't.
Yes.
As far as the septic field, the only thing we like on the edge of it is the trailer. The people will not be walking on it, they will not be driving on it, or anything like that. And part of the septic system has already been paved over, and that was approved by the health department a long time ago.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about criteria eight? Okay, moving on to criteria nine. Exterior lighting. Are there any contemplated changes here to exterior lighting or anything needed? So it's, any concerns about lighting here? If none, move on to number 10. All approaches to paved public roads should be surfaced and, with asphalt, concrete, or similar pervious and impervious materials. Is this one satisfied? Any concerns? Number 11. The arrangement of public or common ways for vehicular pedestrian circulation should respect the patterns of existing planned streets. I mean, clearly, there's a bit of contemplated increase of traffic associated with the rentals. The question is, is this particular standard upheld? According to Sarah's review, it is. Any concerns about the commission, from the commission? Hearing none, moving on to number 12. All streets and roads should be developed in a manner that is protective of public health, safety, and general welfare, be adequately accessible to emergency vehicles and equipment, and where applicable, be developed in compliance with Michigan Department of Transportation or Antrim County specifications. This one is satisfied. Any concerns from the commission? Hearing none, we'll move on to number 13. Water supplies that are sufficient quantity which are easily accessible should be available for the purpose of suppression of type and magnitude of fire that would occur, typically occur based upon the type of development being proposed. Says it's partially satisfied. No new structures proposed. What was the condition associated with this one, Sarah?
Any outside agency permits required, so we didn't hear back from the fire department, although Jackie had said that she had talked verbally, and he didn't have any issues with anything, but I'd prefer to get that in writing on the file.
So that's clearly laid in the conditions already?
Correct.
Okay. Does the commission have any concerns over number 13, subject to the conditions that Sarah just mentioned? Hearing none, okay, moving to number 14. Screening, we already talked about with native vegetation for the buildings. There's no new buildings proposed here, so I don't think this one applies. We talked about the screening of the, of the canoes themselves. So number 14, satisfied? Any concerns of the commission? Any concerns of the commission? Hearing none, move to number 15. Site plans should conform to all applicable requirements of township, county, state, and federal statutes and approval should be conditioned on the applicant receiving all necessary permits before final site plan approval. So clearly the one about the DNR is a major one. Getting confirmation, written confirmation from the fire department. Any other outside agency permits that would apply here? Are there?
Not that I can think of.
Does the commission have any others that they can think of? Okay, hearing none. I believe we've gone through all of the conditions, so I think we're, is there any final questions of the commission before we move to a, first of all, I guess before we move to a vote?
I think we got a special use still too, Andy.
Yes.
There's four of them there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Getting ahead of myself here. Okay, so the special use proposed must be consistent with and promote the purpose and intent of the ordinance and zone district in which the use is proposed. Partially satisfied.
Yeah, I don't know if the planning commission is satisfied with the additional information that you received tonight about the functioning of the business. And this may be appropriate where you would discuss maybe limiting the number of vehicles or watercraft for this application. They can always come back to the planning commission and amend that in, you know, ask for more or change something. There's always an amendment process available as well, if that's something you're interested in.
I'm very interested in that. I, I'm, I'm still concerned about how this business is functioning, going to function. I am going to talk about the planning commission because our primary reason of existing is to preserve the health, safety, and well-being of our citizens. And I'm, I'm not satisfied with their, I don't know their business plan. I mean, I've heard some details, but it seems very fuzzy and I would like a written business plan that we could look at. I would like to hear what their rules, it would have been wonderful to have their contract to look at that, to know how are they directing people, you know, where to go if, if they're not physically taking people. I'm, I'm very concerned about the, their overall and the way they're communicating their business plan.
So Sarah, Sarah, that's something we could put in as, as condition, right?
Yeah.
It would be, it would be an approved application under the conditions, no more than 12, under the conditions that the agreement stated where you can and can't access the lake, where you can and can't park, that you can or can't use road ends.
If they're strategic about when they're taking people to the launches, you know, that would have been really helpful for me to feel comfortable that we're providing a safe, safe environment for everyone.
Yeah, if there's some conditions that you would need so that you feel comfortable with that kind of, like you just mentioned, we may as well put them down there, you know.
I mean, I've, I've been listening to the, to the comments and concerns that are about safety and overcrowding the day park and the, in the DNR site and understand that if someone were to buy, if some family were to buy five stand-up paddleboards, they can still access the day park and use it. And the overcrowding and zoo conditions that are there, if a restaurant were to open where Sunny's was, is going to add to the day park. And I don't really see this application as being the remedy, not approving this application being the remedy to some of the issues of the day park or safety issues. But I do think there are some missing details on how the business would be used, how many, how many units would be rented, where they'd be stored, how they'd be screened. And I think, I feel like listening to the, to the concerns, they can be turned into conditions of approval of the application. The applicant could, that could then say, that doesn't pencil for me as a business or it does. But if we can define those specifically for them, at least it's something for them to respond to.
Yeah, and if, I mean, if you can make them into a condition, that's great because we can move on, but if there's something that you need additional that we may need to come back to the next meeting, you know, to have that detail, if you want to review something further, that's also an option. So I mean, I'd love to get it in a condition form if it's possible, but I also understand you may have concerns that that, it's just not possible. We just need to know what those concerns are.
So I guess when we, when I hear things like business plan, it's things like how are they going to make money? How are they going to keep it sustainable? Things of that nature. I, I think we just want to be careful that if we're going to ask with conditions specific to the parameters of how they're moving their vehicles, how many they're going to have, very specific around that and not whether, we're not involved in trying to help them manage their business or run their business. Because if it's, if, in their business as a whole, we wish them the best of luck to be prosperous. But this is purely about, as you said, Denise, very appropriately.
I think like conditions, like when they mentioned what's in their agreement that they couldn't access the bay. Okay, we can't, we can't, in your agreement with every rental, could be a condition, you can't access using the road ends. You can't park your vehicles at the road ends to, to launch your kayak. That there's a place to launch it, it's the day park of the DNR site. And that's where.
Could you please come back forward, ma'am?
I don't know what you're about to, that's, I think that's a point of our.
I'm just saying, I mean, Sarah said that, you know, people are allowed to as a public person. I didn't realize that we're allowed to enforce that. I think that might be a legal issue. That's all I'm saying.
And I think, I think that's, that's our questions. We think it might be a legal issue. The, the business plan details that I think we want to know would not be about the financial aspects of it. It would be the number of units that you'd rent, where they could and couldn't access the lake or any lake, where they couldn't, couldn't park if they were to load it onto their SUV and take it down to the end of Third Street. And having those kinds of, you know, details in the application, I think would allow the residents and the planning commission to say, okay, now we understand what wouldn't, wouldn't be authorized with your renters. But without that and saying, I don't know, it might be 20 or it might be 30 or I'm not sure where they'll go, you're hearing concern from their, from your community that says, I mean, I, I think the application, the use is right for our commercial nodes that we call villages and hamlets in our master plan. It, it's the right kind of use, but without the details that the residents, your neighbors want to, want to hear, it, it's getting harder to approve the application even though it feels like the right kind of use for the site.
All I'm saying is if it's open to a public person, I'm not sure we are the entity, the enforcing entity that can say, no, you can't park there, no, you can't use this, no, you can't. I'm not sure we're allowed to do that. That's all I'm saying.
That's, that's a good question. Ma'am, do you have any understanding of why your contract prohibited the bay? What, what drove that?
I don't think our insurance covers any kayaks or paddleboards at the bay and I think it applies to everyone down there in Elk Rapids as well.
Okay.
Andy?
Yes?
I, I just had noted that I, I thought the addition of a condition for the number, limiting the number would be good. 20 does feel like a lot. And then also maybe because there's such concern about where it's launched, for safety reasons, for privacy, all that, maybe adding DNR permit requirement and then a statement that if they are participating in the launching of, of the kayak or whatever, or delivery of it, that it has to be at the DNR launch. So, you know, once the customer has the kayak or whatever, they, you know, they may do what they're going to do, but they are doing their best to drive it to the place that's approved and has some oversight from somebody like the DNR.
So those are good points. So Sarah, do you think from your standpoint now, we have enough criteria we could provide them, how could we get this down to the point where they could address the questions around the business plan more succinctly? Could we do that as part of a condition here? And would the commission feel comfortable working with staff on that? And we could provide some of the criteria that we've already reached out and provided here? Would that be appropriate? Would, I guess the question would be, how does the, the commission feel about that?
Yeah, it sounds like the items you're talking about can be completely dealt with as long as we have a majority agree on what you want to see. So, you know, a lot of you have talked about limiting the number. What's the number? You know, we'll put that as a condition that the number is limited to that. So they have eight right now, 20 is too much. Is 10 enough or not, you know, is it 15? So why don't we focus on that for a minute and see if we can come up with a, a number and then we'll go on to the next item?
12. I'm not sure.
I think a dozen.
A dozen?
No, I think, I think we're going to, we have to try to get this.
I think it is a big thing that people are missing. Because I used to rent from Butch's when we looked on the other way all the time and I'd take my cab. When I get a bunch of people that come over, I have a couple subs, I've got a couple kayaks. I don't have enough. That would be great for us to go pick them up, bring it to my house for a community together. I wouldn't be bringing to launch, but I think it's a great idea for our family.
Okay. So, so I think a limit would be appropriate. I think 12 seems reasonable. They said they had eight now. I think that makes sense. I, I do worry about a contract, trying to have them enforce a contract because if somebody rents a kayak from Traverse City and drives it up here, they can take it to a road end. I don't know that it would be fair to them, just like it's, I mean, we're not going to drive to Traverse City and try to make their contracts, enforce those. I think that's not reasonable. I do appreciate the concerns about the safety and so forth, but it feels as though we are constraining them when businesses in the surrounding communities don't have those same constraints because they can rent them, people can put them on their car and drive them somewhere. I do think we could say, I think, Laura, to your comment, that they cannot provide transportation to road ends. They cannot provide transportation. Clearly, they wouldn't do it to the bay anyway. And we could narrow it that way.
Yeah, I like that condition that Laura had talked about, that, you know, if they're participating in the launching, that it has to be to the north end.
Yes.
For that part. I think that's a great way to phrase it, participating in the launching. How does everybody else feel about that? Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So real quickly, because the number's a big important item here. How, any nods? Does 12 seem reasonable? 10? Go with 12? Okay. Go with 12. So condition of 12, no transportation to road ends.
Yep.
Any other conditions that we talked about there?
I don't have any other noted, but I know there was some discussion about other items. So was there anything else that anybody had wanted to make a condition kind of related to the business functioning? Hours of operation they have in there, they're 10 to, what was it, 10 to 4? So they do have hours of operation in there. It was, they have one from 10 to 2 and then 2 to 6, where kind of their rental section, so you could do 10 to 6. Everybody's okay with that function?
Yes.
Okay.
Then you had the conditions of the striping and signage.
Right. Yep.
And the screening.
Mm-hmm. And it has to be stored in the driveway.
The driveway.
Yeah, I guess we kind of got in a robot way because we were talking about number one for that special use.
Right.
For approval. So is there anything else that you would need as a condition to be able to satisfy that first standard? Is anybody thinking of anything else?
Hearing none, let's move on to number two. Special use proposed must be compatible with the zoning and use of adjacent lands. Additional details regarding how the business functions, the planning commission will need to determine if the use is compatible with neighboring properties.
And my, my response now to that would be, you know, we're, you're asking for the additional screening for the neighboring properties. You're trying to limit the number of boats that are operating from the site. You're requiring the parking in the driveway. So as far as I'm concerned, I think you've addressed some of my concerns about that additional details. I don't know if there's anything else anyone needs.
If not, move on to number three. Special use proposed must not adversely impact the environment. Satisfied according to her findings. We really haven't raised any concerns about the actual environment itself out of this, so I would suggest that one's met. Number four, the special use proposed must not unduly burden or exceed the ability of public services or facilities to handle the anticipated needs of the community. So this one, I don't view is fully satisfied because we do think that there will be an increase of areas, but I think we can address it by limiting it to the number of, of units Does anybody have a different view of that?
No.
So it's partially satisfied, but can limit it in number to, to manage the capacity. So that's all of the, at this point, correct?
Yeah.
So with that, any final questions or comments before we move to a vote? Yes, Barb?
I would just like to comment that I am very disappointed that the parks committee is not willing to work with these people and try to at least see if they're in a mutually beneficial arrangement of benefit names and using the park, the day park. Because it's very similar to Clinch Park in Traverse City where they have a boat launch, they have a launch area for kayaks and paddleboards and canoes, and they have a swim area. And it doesn't seem to be able to put that additional bit of lodging space in there. And working with these folks, we may even be successful in getting our launch fees paid, getting some supervision at the park, being able to maximize the use of the park because it won't be so unruly and it can be used efficiently by everyone. So I'm very disappointed that the park committee denied them the right opportunity, probably even to discuss with them, the use of part of the day park for launching these toys.
We were told we would need to go to the day park committee, which we attempted to do twice. Then we were told to come in and they would have a meeting with us and they were told, no, we won't consider it, that's it. And there was no discussion. We kind of felt like it was a slap in the face, to be honest.
Jason, did you have a comment on that?
Well, somebody that sits on the day park committee, there are steps that are in the process right now. I don't, like most of you said, it's a zoo down there. We, we put offers out there and raised the rate and still can't find attendance to be down there. I also want everybody to know that, let's not forget, this will be our first year that we have a public enforcement officer. I don't know if that's going to change much, but it might change a lot. I know Bob's going to be down there patrolling that quite a bit. We got a fence that's going down in there because Ginny Hawkins, who leads that down there, says multiple times, little kids are almost getting hit and run over. She's saved kids multiple times. So I think that's being addressed, but it's going to take a little time. Once we get that fence up so kids can't be running from the park to the boat launch, that will help. It's, it's being talked about, but we're not there yet.
So any other questions or comments from the commission before we move on and move to a vote?
Do you want me to review the conditions?
Yes, please.
Okay. So on page 19 of 19 in the staff report, I had listed some proposed conditions. So one is the loading space be marked with paint and signs that their loading space is only, not for parking. Number two, outside agency permits required prior to land use and specifically looking at the fire department and the DNR requirement. Item three is assigned permits required for any change to the signage on site. We didn't talk about this, but I think it was mentioned in the report that they didn't, weren't anticipating any signage, so this is kind of just a heads up if you do do something, you need a permit. Number four was addition to the site plan prior to issuance of the land use permit and those are the lot areas, screening and buffering on the plan, the square footage of the existing restaurant and the setbacks. Number five would be screening provided on the commercial property and that they can work with staff for that screening. Number six is that the storage is located in the driveway on the residential property. Seven, limited to 12 boats or vehicles at this time. Number eight is if participating and launching, it has to be at the north end with no road ends. And that's all that I have. Did I miss anything from anybody? And that's all that I have. Did I miss anything from anybody?
I think you captured all the ones that I was aware of, I recall. So, at this point, could I?
12. Yep.
12. She. Of 12.
Sorry, you said 12 boats or vehicles.
Well, I mean, we've talked about 12 stand-up paddleboards, canoes or kayaks.
But the total number would not exceed 12.
Yeah.
Yes. Not 12 of each, but 12 in total. So, do I have a motion to approve the special use permit for 31 scoops to rent?
I do have a recommended motion also there on page 19 near the middle.
Okay.
Make sure you hit all the parcel numbers and addresses.
And we'd want to put as amended with the conditions.
Yep.
All right, I'll give it a shot. I'll make a motion to approve with conditions. PCA 2021-35 for 31 scoops at 2786 North US 31, North US 31, 2722 North US 31, parcel numbers 5-14324-030-000 and 05-14-795-023-10 and 05-14-795-22-00 for sales and rentals of watercraft to be on the criteria in the staff report as discussed tonight and as amended during the planning commission conversation.
Do we have a second?
Thanks.
I will second.
Discussion.
The term watercraft, can the, can it be added, non-motorized?
Sure.
Yes.
As long as the person that made the motion and seconded agree that we can add that word in.
Non-motorized?
I agree. Do I need to restate the whole motion?
No, just say that.
Please don't.
I mean, I could do it without the parcel numbers, but yeah, with non-motorized. That's, please add that to my motion.
Jason, do you second that?
And I will second that.
Discussion. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Laura?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Barbara? Denise?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Chair says yes. So, the application to approve with the conditions, and I'm not going to reread the whole thing, was approved by all members of the commission with the exception of Bob Hawkins, who was dismissed for them. Okay? Thank you. That was difficult. Thank you applicant for your patience through that process. So, as painful as this is going to be, I'm going to recommend a five-minute break for everybody. We will be more efficient with our time and when we come back. So, five minutes, we will commence.
I wonder.
So I appreciate everybody coming back to order here. Again, I know for one, I needed a break. That was a long process, but a necessary one. So we're going to move into the second item of new business tonight. And this is the special use permit two, 2022 dash three Torchport Airport thirteen ninety-one, North US thirty-one parcel numbers zero five, one, four, seven, seven, zero, 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 dash ten and zero five, fourteen, seven, seven, zero, zero, one, four, dash, zero, zero, and zero five, one, four, three, two, five, zero, two, five, zero, zero, for outdoor event to hold charity fundraiser. So again, from a process perspective, I'm going to clarify it a little bit better this time. We're going to ask for a presentation from the applicant. And then for the commission members, we'll ask clarifying questions of, based on the actual comments that the applicant makes. Then we'll go into public hearing and then we'll come back into review and discussion. And there likely will be clarifying or further questions for the applicant at that point. So with that, Mr. Baze, would you please come forward and provide an overview of your application?
Andy, if I could just before we get into this, if there's anyone in the audience that hasn't already filled out a comment card, that's going to want to make comment for the public hearing, there's some cards on the back desk to fill out. So just while, while he's giving his presentation, if there's anyone else that wants to speak, and then you can just bring them up to me.
Thank you. I've got an over, under bet for thirty minutes, and we've got to, we've got to work faster. So again, I thank you guys for taking, taking the time to listen to this. Our goal in looking at the application, I think everybody's had an opportunity to look at it, is just have a fun kickoff to summer weekend at the airport. Most of the activities that I have listed there do not require a special use permit because it is a MDOT and FAA approved airport, but I listed them in total, just so you could get a bigger picture of what we are trying to do. Last year, there was a lot of misinformation, there was a lot of unknowns, there was a lot of things that were said that just were untrue, and it brought a huge mess to the table. After the event, I have heard mostly positive comments from the field. And I think that's evident by last year, there was a hundred and seven letters, this year, there's only eleven. So that's, that's a big step to me. Not that I want any, because I want all the information dispelled. And honestly, there, I want to talk about that tonight, because there's still a lot of information that people don't get or don't understand. So I do want to talk through that, so people understand more. But really, looking at the application, the fireworks show that we did last year, we dumbed it down to a residential show. Again, a special use permit's not needed. It was a twenty-six minute show. Everybody that showed up, and there was hundreds that showed up, had an incredible time. Many times, people thought that the fireworks show was going to end, because you know, it's a typical, you know, five, eight, twelve minute show, it went twenty-six minutes. It was a blast. It went without issues, without problems, with the traffic getting in and out of there. Everybody just had a great time. We're planning on doing that. But long and short, what I'm trying to do is, is resurrect something that's been happening at this airport for decades. I have people that I've never met before, says, listen, I grew up here, we used to go to the car shows, and we used to come out, and we used to hang out, and everybody had a great time. I'm trying to bring that back. And I, there's, there's, you know, there might be some growing pains doing it, but I think it's going to be awesome. We're not, I don't want to do a car show this year. I know they had a car show kind of benefit last, two or three years ago, before we took ownership of it. What we want to do is just have a drive-in. Most of the time, you know, having a drive-in is just kind of a community thing. And introducing people to aviation and to, you know, automobiles, and just bringing them out there, because I'm trying to raise funds. I mean, what, what you guys can understand, coming from, you know, downstate, I run charities, right? We run homeless shelters, that's what we do. Up here, we've done a lot already with the local shelters, with waitresses, with, you know, anything that we, that we can and, and do. I mean, I feel that God has blessed us, and all we focus on now, outside of running our businesses, is continue giving back. This is a great way to do it, because aviators are generous. You know, they're good people. Again, we didn't have a problem last year, and I don't think, I think everybody realized that. You come out and you meet the, the pilots, you won't find a, you know, a drop of alcohol anywhere, because they're pilots. Eight hours bottled with throttle, baby, and we, we want to fly, we don't want to be grounded. So you don't have the shenanigans that some people think something like this would, would bring. We just, we just don't have it. So it's, it's generally just a good time. So our goal this year, at this memorial weekend event, is to raise twenty-five thousand dollars for the four local food banks that surround Torch Lake. And honestly, I don't think we're going to have a problem doing that, again, because of generosity of the people that, that we bring, and it's just going to be a good time. People are hurting out there, and it's going to continue to get worse, and so we've got to feed that machine, we've got to continue to give back. I'm sure I'll be, have the opportunity to answer questions as it relates to the plan that, that we're doing. But what I want to do is just take a, take a minute, just to overcome a couple of the obstacles or objections that have been submitted already, to make sure that everybody's on the same page. The, there's really only three, if you read the three, or the eleven letters that were sent in, there's really only three major objections. The first one, and I'll read just a couple of, of the quotes from the letter, so we understand what we're talking about. It says, "This request appears to be another approach to obtain commercial usage." Another one said, "Activities are not consistent with residential zoning." Another one says, "If owners want to engage in business, they should find properties zoned commercial." What I think most people don't realize is I have nearly a hundred acres of commercially zoned property at the airport. We are using it for its intended purpose. We're not trying to use a residential or any residential for what we're doing. So that's number one. You can't, you can't bring that to the table, because it doesn't exist. We're using commercial. The second one says, again, a couple, a couple of them, "Follow the township's master plan." Not consistent with the township's master plan. So you guys know, the airport was, for some reason, left out of the township's master plan. What I have, what I learned, because the state of Michigan flew up here, it was yesterday morning, they flew up here yesterday morning, brought me a letter with all the schematics and everything for the airport. Leaving the airport out of the master plan is a violation of Michigan state law. It has to be added. I dropped all the information off to Jackie yesterday, right from the state of Michigan. And I guess it's the first thing we've got to realize, what, what we're talking about here, this airport is, it's privately owned by a group of people, but it is a public use airport. It's regulated by MDOT and FAA. What I'm being told is, really, I should be dealing with the state of Michigan on these matters, not the local township, because I'm a manager on behalf of the state of Michigan for the airport. So again, I want to work with the township, I'm not coming in here to, you know, drop bombs and throw grenades. I really want to work with the township, and I think what we're going to do is, is really, really neat. But just to give you, read just a part of this, this is, "The airport approach plan consists of height protection for FAA Part seventy-seven surfaces surrounding the airport and land use protection using standards adopted by MAC. The aeronautical code of the state of Michigan requires these plans, as well as a copy of the airport layout plan, be filed with the local planning agencies and/or political subdivisions underlying the areas depicted on the plans. Once filed with the local planning agency, Section one-two-five-point-three-two-oh-three of the Zoning Enabling Act, Act one-ten of two thousand and six, requires these plans be included in the community's master plan, which should provide additional level of protection for the airport." All the things that came with it clearly identify what is able to, or the protections of the airport. I mean, there was a lot of comments last year, we don't need this airport, they should go away. It's not going away. So that, that's one of the other things. One thing that I want to note on that, in part of the application, we've talked about camping. Camping is something that's not new to this airport. Camping has been happening at this airport longer than the zoning has, or prior to the zoning being enacted in this township. That's documented by the state of Michigan, and it's already included in their twenty-twenty-two aeronautical charts. I'm already approved for camping at a MDOT and federally, FAA airport. Again, that was submitted as well. So anything aviation related, whether, whether or not, you know, again, I, I don't want to, I don't want to say bad, but aviation related is MDOT and FAA. So, so the, just make sure that when we're talking about this tonight, the next comment that people are making, and, and I get this one, right? I really get it, and this is the last complaint that I think that people are making now, is, it says, "Objection is to the noise." You know, they sound like lawn mowers in the sky, when they're just talking about light sport aviation, not airplanes. I mean, they sound a lot louder than, you know, a lawnmower in, in the sky. But people were taken by surprise by the paramotors last year. And, and again, I, I want to express that, that I get this. And to me, this is the only reasonable objection. But it's one objection that the board really has no say in, or nothing they could do about, because it is a federally regulated sport. Power paramotors, I just want you guys to know, it is the fastest growing segment of aviation in the country. It's coming, whether we like it or not. Whether I brought it or somebody else is, because actually, there's a lot of people that fly paramotors around here before I came up here. It's coming. And, and I think more and more people are just going to have to embrace it, because it's the fastest growing segment. People can't afford to go buy even a Cessna one-seventy-two and go through the license and all that, but, you know, somebody can learn how to fly a paramotor, and it, just the exhilaration of flight is incredible. We can teach them how to fly in less than a week. Most people could do that, and, and really enjoy it. Just to put this on record, though, because a lot of people aren't familiar with this, the power paramotors, and that's, this is only one part of it. Our goal is to bring in aircrafts, like has happened in, you know, in recent years, as well as power paramotors, because they go together. Flight rules, FAA or FAR one-oh-three is what regulates the flight or the power paramotor activities. So if anybody has any questions on height restrictions, distance from lakes, or whatever, you just have to go to FAR one-oh-three, and that's what regulates or dictates what a power paramotor can or cannot do once they leave the ground. So again, the, the noise, I get it. And again, I just want this on record, you know, we, we bought on the lake, right? And my wife kind of makes jokes about the cigar boats that go up and down Torch Lake sometimes, right? Sometimes they're early, sometimes they're late. They're noisy and obnoxious, right? We don't necessarily like them, but I bought on a lake, I'm not going to cry about a cigar boat going up and down the lake, right? If you bought in the surrounding area of an airport, you cannot cry about an airplane or aviation use in or around the airport. I get it, I truly understand, the airport has not been used a lot, right? There's a failed portion of the development over the last twenty years, hasn't been used a lot, but just, but it's there. And it doesn't mean it wouldn't get used in the future. And so people can't get mad that, that we're, we're using it for its intended purpose now. But again, I get it, and one thing that we're, we, we do, again, because I want to be courteous, I want to be a, a good neighbor, when, when we brought paramotors over, our, our job, or what we want to do is, is let people know, hey, there, there are, this is a community, it's my community, right? I'm not coming in here and, and shooting things up and leaving like everybody else. I live here, right? I work here, this is what I do. So when, when we bring paramotors up, we try to keep people five hundred feet up, above the ground, and really not to intrude on, you know, the neighbors. Last year, we did have somebody that got real excited and flew down the lake and got close to, got close to people over on the bay. He was super excited, he's, he turned fifty years old, and for the first time in his entire life, his parents live on the, on the lake, I think it's San Marco Trail, and he flew over and went by their deck, so they could watch him for the very first time at fifty years old, fly that thing. So he got super excited, went and did that. Even though we told people, stay up, stay away, you know, just be courteous. And, and we have no problem continuing to do that, even though, rightfully so, somebody could go and fall in the lake if they wanted to, because, you know, it, it's their right. So, so barring those things, really, we just want to have, you know, a good kickoff to summer. And what a way to do it, other than Memorial Day weekend, and give him back. I mean, so many went before us to give so much, the least we could do is give back on Memorial Day.
Thank you. So at this point, we might have a few clarifying comments or questions from the commission?
I have none, I thought you did a good job.
Any other clarifying?
Andy, I've got one, maybe it's for Sarah. Sarah, in the proposed conditions in the report summary, excuse me, it says hours, and then it's left blank. What, what would the hours be of the whole event, and what would the hours be of the power paramotors?
So again, if you look up the, the aviation regulations, FAR one-oh-three, power paramotors have, they cannot start no earlier than thirty minutes before sunset, and they have to be on the ground no later than thirty minutes after sunset, or thirty minutes, sunrise, sunset, you get it, thirty minutes. That's the maximum.
Thanks.
But I do think on one of the pages, there, it does spell out the timing of most things, I think it was written on the back of one of them.
Back of the application.
There, there you go.
Yeah, I just put hours there to have you thinking about that, to make sure you understand exactly what hours this would be operating, and if you wanted to accept those or limit them to something different.
So it's, help me then, so when would the first, when would the event first start, and when would it end? I know it's-
On the, on the back of the application?
Yep, it's, I remember reading it, but I just-
Yeah, Friday, May twenty-seventh, set up camping, fly in, Saturday, pancake breakfast, eight to noon, it's all, it's right on the back.
And then it wraps up at noon on Monday?
So I was going to say, like, if you, if you were to look at Friday, you would say Friday, people start coming in or set up-
Afternoon.
Afternoon, and essentially, you've got people onsite all day, because you've got camping, too, overnight. But for anybody that's not staying onsite, when would they be leaving on, like, Friday or Saturday?
When they left?
Okay.
What, what do you mean?
I mean, kind of like when the festivities are over, or when you would anticipate kind of the public leaving the site. I mean, on Friday, you might not have any of that, but Saturday, you've got fireworks, so you're saying, okay, everybody's going to be off the site by eleven-thirty type of thing.
Thirty minutes after sunset, pretty much everything has to be shut down, because legally, all aviation has to shut down by thirty minutes after sunset. Except the fireworks, Saturday night, and, you know, like last year, after Saturday fireworks, I mean, it was pretty quick and orderly, and it was dispersed.
So how many paramotors would you expect this year?
Well, so again, we're going to, we're going to be looking at airplanes and paramotors. And, you know, honestly, I, I don't know. You know, there, there could be twenty paramotors, and, you know, I could, we could have a dozen planes.
Okay.
But, but again, I just want to make sure that, that everybody understands, that is really irrelevant to this, because it's aviation use.
So Sarah, question for you, with the special use permit, do we have, this is for a particular time period, basically starting on Friday and ending on Sunday, or Monday, excuse me, and it, if it's, if, depending on what happens, but if it were approved, it's just for this particular time period, does it, does it continue ever going forward at this point, just for this time period alone?
Right, it would, this application, it is, it, it feels a little clunky, because we're dealing with something that's over four days, and that's what your approval is here, but you're going through all the requirements of a traditional site, mainly good with scoops. But this, the application is for this specific time, that's the only time it can occur. If you wanted to do this again next Memorial Day, it'd be a separate application, we'd go through the same process. So it is limited to these dates.
And how do we, because I've heard some general concerns that this carries forward with the land, or landowner, and then any of, could be, you know, transcend to somebody else who bought the land. I mean, help me understand why some people would say that, and how do we know that that's the-
Yeah, so that's traditionally with a special use permit, it does stay with the land that carries on to the next property owner for those activities. But, you know, again, since this is limited, and the application's limited from May twenty-seventh through May thirtieth, that's what it's limited to. It doesn't carry on, I mean, essentially, after the end of May, it's almost as if it didn't exist, other than we have to keep the file forever, because we're required by law to keep the file forever.
Okay, other clarifying questions from the commission?
Tim, part question, part statement, I guess, referring to part one-oh-three and the flight hours, just to clarify for everybody, I think that it states thirty minutes after civil twilight, thirty minutes before civil sunset, which are sunrise, which doesn't necessarily-
A little different.
-coincide with the real.
Right.
There's a table that you can look up and see what the actual time for that day is going to be, and those, those are the times-
Talking to the mic, please.
Those are the times, those are the times in which it's legal to operate. The other thing, something you said made me think, I wasn't sure if you were going to have the airport closed to general aviation during this thing. So you got paramotors up with, and they don't have radios, how does the Unicom thing work? And what happens with a, if a GA aircraft comes down, how do you provide safe access and taxiway, when there's camping along the taxiway and everything?
Yeah, so just like last year, I NOTM closed runway four-two-two.
Yep.
So all paramotor activities and camping stayed on four-two-two, nine-two-seven was still open, and general aviation, you know, came in. So again, paramotor and general aviation, it's not uncommon to have it all the time at, at other airports, it's not uncommon, uncommon here, but it happens all the time. So these guys, you know, Tim, for an example, he knows, he's not going to get in the flight path of nine-two-seven, any airplane that would come in or come out of that.
Oh, so nine-two-seven will be operable?
Nine-two-seven will be operable for general aviation.
I saw some things that, like the, the food, not food vendor, but there were some things I thought were set up along the nine-two-seven.
So it's nine-two-seven, which ones which?
Nine-two-seven is east-west.
East-west.
Yep, four-two-two is more north-south.
So east-west would stay open, north-south would be-
Closed.
Close.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I've just got one other question. You made a statement, you said, "I want to work with the township." My question's, will you? Because when, when you talk about the hours that are allowed, you keep going back to, just so you know, I don't really have to. So my question is, will you work with the township?
While not limiting aviation? No. So the township cannot put regulations, or I'm not going to, I'm not going to dumb down what my authority is as the manager of, of a public use airport, because somebody wants me to limit the use to twelve planes in a day, right? I, I mean, I, I won't do that. But in terms of everything else, my, my goal is to make this a fun event for the community, give back to the community, you know, work with the community, work with the township. But again, I just wanted to make sure, because he was saying, well, you know, how many? I mean, I, I can't control that. If, if planes hear about this and they want to fly in, I can't stop that. That's what I meant, so I didn't-
So on a, to push on that just a little bit, like, suppose two-hundred showed up, and there's got to be, I would imagine the FAA would have some capacity limit, I mean, they have capacity limits at other airports, and they have to, other than an emergency situation, how would that impact? And I'm not saying you're going to have two-hundred, so I'm, I'm exaggerating to make the point, but the question is, how do we manage something like that? And that's why we're trying to get a sense for a number.
Yeah, so, so again, something like that, it's never going to happen, right? But suppose it even came remotely close, pilots will dictate how it goes, right? So, so I'm, I'm, you know, PIC, if I'm coming into an airport and I see there's congestion, I'm going to make a decision, I'm not going there, it's already congested, I'm going to go somewhere else, I'm going to do something different. The congestion, I don't think we'll ever have an issue with, but, yeah, but again, I, I don't, I don't think we'll get too busy. You know, with, with airplanes coming into a Memorial Day weekend, you know, event like this, I mean, the, the most I ever see fly into an event like this, six, eight, ten, twelve, they, they, yeah, they just don't come out in numbers of a couple hundred, you know, unless you throw on an Oshkosh or something like that. If you've ever been there, that's a riot.
So any other questions from the commission at this point? So I hearing none, Mr. Baze, thank you for the presentation, I'm sure we'll have some more questions. We are now going to move into the public hearing aspect of this. So at this point, we have public cards filled out, please limit your time to three minutes, we will be tracking that, and come up and state your name and your resident, where you live, and we'll go from there. So who would like to come forward first?
Well, I have a list.
Okay.
I'm taking over for Laura in her absence. First one on list, Bill Stroud Iron.
Nice to be on this side. Regarding the airport application, I'm not going to speak to all the other possible issues or things that are going on, but there's an old German proverb that says, "The devil's in the details." So what I'd like to take is a couple minutes to look at the details of the applicant's application. And there's some real-ish, open issues in here, that doesn't necessarily fall on the applicant, but does fall on our zoning administration. So let me, first one, under applicant information, it stated, "Signature on file." That's not proper protocol. The applicant should file the application and put their signature on it. Number two, under page one, unofficial use only, fee paid. This one really bothers me. In red brackets on there, take, quote, unquote, "Take the four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application fee out of the escrow owed to him." I don't know who wrote that, but if the escrow fee that was put in place last year for the applicant's other issue is still remains unpaid back to the applicant, then shame on us. He deserves his money back. And that's, if you don't do it that way- And that's, if you don't do it that way, it really comes down to co-mingling of funds, which knowing this township the way I do, that really would surprise me if that really happened. So, let's get back to the details and make it right, not wrong, as you move forward with your application. Again, in the application, it says applicant will obtain county permits for camping. Well, if the camping is on private land, that's a township permit that should be issued. And just to remind the commissioners, that the applicant, in most cases, there's probably exceptions, you have to own the property, you have to own the camper, you have to apply for a permit, and then you're given a thirty-day timeframe, you can use the camper. I don't think this applies because it's in the application, it says county permit for camping. Again, in red pen on the application, listed the following dates, 5/27, 5/28, 5/29. Nowhere in there does it say the year. It's assumed that it's this year, but since you're going to approve this, or not approve this, you really need to get the details right. So, I'm suggesting to the planning commission and the zoning administrator, you send this application back to the zoning department, get it filled out correctly, and come back here and do the proper due diligence. With that, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I forgot my job. Brian Agar.
Brian Agar, 5911 North M88, a couple of questions. I'm not familiar with those tax IDs. The applicant mentioned that he has a hundred acres of commercial property, are those tax IDs the commercial property? I also understand that there are residences in that space that I understand, that I understand is part of Torch Park, and does this fly-in have any effect on the people who call that home every day? And I don't know how many there are, but I understand that there are some. Then I have another question. I always assumed that this was a quote-unquote "private" airpark, not a FAA, MDOT-approved, and I don't know when that happened, and that might be a question. It was presented as if, it's always been that way, but I don't know if it's always been that way. And my last question is, does this application fit what the airpark bylaws are? Because the people who bought into the airpark would have some bylaws, and it would say, "These things can happen in the airpark and these things can't happen in the airpark." My question is, does this particular thing fall within the bylaws? And then, my last question, is the applicant speaking for the whole community, or is the applicant speaking for himself? Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Kleinfeldter.
Donna Kleinfeldter, 1853 San Marino Trail. I'm just a little old lady, and I don't know all about all this stuff, and I want people to enjoy their first weekend of the summer, but I want to enjoy it too, and I'm enjoying the quiet, and when, last year, it wasn't free of trouble. There were many cars on Bay Colony Road, and it was difficult to drive in and out, and people were standing around, you had to walk out, and the noise from the, from the fireworks was very destructive of peace and quiet. And maybe this year it won't be quite as loud, it seems like they've toned it down. However, it's not pleasant, and more than that, the constant drumming of these para, whatever they are, is horrendous. It's around your house, they're going in front of you, sometimes they drop in the water, it's scary, and it's not pleasant. And I live there and love it, but I don't love this weekend, and I think it really is not a good use of our quiet little burg of this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also, I forgot one thing, and that is, I'm also very concerned about with the fireworks, that we would start a fire in that field. That's scary.
Thank you.
Randy Bishop.
You okay with that?
Yes. So, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Bishop, timeout, timeout.
Excuse me, this is, this is our meeting here. My goodness.
So, Mr. Bishop, you'd asked to go last, and clearly others are, everybody else has to follow a certain order, and they have so chose to do that, so I guess, okay.
Was there a vote in motion? The chair left.
Who's next?
Dan Swanson.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. My name's Dan Swanson, and I live at 2693 Bay Harbor Club Lane. I'm coming to you on this application with request, and that is that either the application be denied, or it be subject to two conditions. One, that Torch Park eliminate the paramotor-related events referenced in its application, and number two, Torch Park cancel all the paramotor events listed in its application. If you look at the application.
Sir, can you please keep up close to the mic? Thank you.
If you look at the application, the typewritten pages, that would be three and four, there are four paramotor events listed with no hours, no hours, it just says dates, paramotor fly, paramotor test rides, paramotor airshow, paramotor test drives, over the four days. There are many paramotor events, but no hours for when this will take place. Now, in Memorial Day 2021, which the applicant referenced, we're within a mile of the airport, and we heard paramotors, just as the prior person described, and we're a mile away. Those are like chainsaws, that's what I thought it was, a chainsaw in the air flying over our home on the bay. Those chainsaw motors and paramotors, they're in the early morning, between usually seven and nine AM, when you're getting up in the morning, they are in the early evening, when you're going to sit down to eat, usually from around, you know, five o'clock to seven o'clock. It is a loud, obnoxious, and disturbing noise, and even the applicant admits that. Now, you know, listening to that for three days, many of us are not here to listen to paramotors any day, let alone the holiday weekend, when you have friends and family and you're eating outside and trying to enjoy the weekend. Under the standards for granting approval of a special application, standard number three says, "The special use proposed may not adversely impact the environment." This kind of loud, obnoxious noise falls within the Clean Air Act, which the EPA enforces, it's called noise pollution. It defines noise pollution as unwanted or disturbing sound, sound that becomes unwanted when it either interferes with normal activities such as sleeping, conversation, or disrupts or diminishes one's quality of life. Again, even the applicant acknowledges that this is noise pollution. In the zoning ordinances.
Wait, your time is up, sir.
Can I wrap it up?
Very quickly.
Okay. There are at least twenty references to how you try to control noise for houses, kennels, and everything else. The noise pollution here should be controlled, and therefore, that's the basis of my request, either deny it, or end the paramotor portions of this event. Thank you very much, and I apologize for.
Thank you.
Dan Wright. These are written small in the corner, so, Mikey Lee. Laura Willard.
Hi, my name is Laura Willard, I live on San Marino Trail. I was not here last Memorial Day, but I'd like to agree with what Mr. Swanson said. I had reports that people were toe-dipping on my beach.
Yes, please keep the microphone up, I'm sorry, you have a soft voice and it's not hearing. Thank you.
I had people toe-dipping on my beach, and I have to apply to do everything because I'm in a critical zone, a critical dune area, I have to apply to do lots of things on my property, and people were disturbing the top, my top, my, not top, but my lowest dune. So, I feel like I have to come here this year and be there to protect my property. So, I would also suggest to this group that we, I agree with Mr. Swanson, I think we should carve out the paramotor activity because of the noise disturbance, but also for safety reasons, I'm on the bay, and the wind is so erratic there, and the erosion just to the south of San Marino Trail, I mean, I'm walking along and I'm looking up two stories tall, I'm worried that, and there's these giant trees on the precipice of falling in, I'm walking, like, I better be quiet, I don't want to even think about what the vibration of those flying chainsaws is going to do to these giant slopes, I'm worried about them flying in with a gust and being impaled on some of the dead branches, I'm worried about them, you know, eroding the, the high bluffs, I, I just, I'm worried about the wind, I'm sorry. I have a couple other safety concerns, I'm concerned about the fire resources, what are we doing extra to protect the neighborhoods nearby? I've noticed that in recent years, the, has been erratic, the rainfall has been erratic, it's been very dry lately, I'm very worried about fire. What are we doing to have extra fire resources there and extra emergency vehicles? Because I've seen one too many barges go off and accidents, even in the residential realm, with regard to safety and fireworks. I guess the other question I had is, what is the owner of the airport going to do to protect the private roads? What signage can we require of him? And, we just had too much traffic and too much mayhem on my street, and we're private, we pay for everything ourselves, and we don't like the extra traffic, so, I'm sorry, I think that's about it, I'm just curious about stuff like insurance, and it's a deeply difficult time for the people that live close to the airport, and I would request that you reject the application, or carve out the paramotist, motorist activities at the very least, and answer some of the safety questions of the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alan Martel.
Alan Martel, 901 Woodengeate in Kuwaitan, I am trustee of the township. I'm speaking to you tonight because special uses do not come to the board level for consideration, and so I want to put my thoughts in it. I think, right off the bat, I think that we should verify the, from our attorneys with regard to Mr. Bays' managerial use of the airport. As I understand, the airport, the commercial property, the airport runways are, were dedicated to the public, they don't pay taxes on them. What extent we can use public property for the activities that he has, I think should be checked. And camping has gone on in the airport for years, but often it was a fly-in, they had a tent, they put it under their wing, it wasn't trailers coming in and parking along that area. Also, the residential, and if you look under the special use under residential, absolutely none of the things he's proposing are allowed in a residential area. And, you know, I want to point out too, as I remember well, back in the early 2000s, why the airport was not included in the master plan was that the master plan, if you go way back beyond 2000, four or five master plans back, the whole idea of commercial property was to be in the villages of Eastport and Torch Lake Village, and so when the airport was originally, in 1983, when zoning came into effect, the airport was zone commercial. So, when the owners then decided to make it into the residential area, residential airpark, that was very, very, that fit the master plan, because then that took that piece of commercial property and made it a residential area, and our commercial development in the master plan was to be north toward Eastport and Torch Lake Village. So, that's partly why it isn't specifically stated there, it ought to be stated, I agree, but I think it ought to be verified. I think the airport's underused, Mr. Bays, I really do, I think it's underused, and I wish there were, you know, there were more doing it. The noise of the, of the aircraft, again, I always tell people, I live where I can hear it snow, well, they're not flying usually in the wintertime, so maybe that's not a concern, but it is a very, very quiet and a very nice place, and that has a lot of value, a lot of value financially for us. And so, you know, talk about working with the township, I think there could be ways to work with the township, but I think you're going to have to look a little bit too in terms of what we, we've lived here a long time and what we do. The other thing I want to say also, and I'll say this publicly too, I've lived now through three, four major wars in this country, and Memorial Weekend is a time in which we honor those folks, and I don't see fireworks as working out well with that, it doesn't work. Fourth of July, yeah, I find it somewhat even irreverent in that regard, and now we add our EMS people and our fire people and our police people as well into this whole consideration of thanking them for what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martel.
Howard Willard.
My name is Howard Willard, I live 2153 San Marino Trail. Planning commission draw their own conclusion that at a meeting where the applicant is asking for permission for a special use permit, that he opens his talk, talking about all the things we don't control about the airport, and frankly, a lot of what he said, in my opinion, is hearsay, but I do think there are a couple of things that he's asking for. He's asking for permission to expand the use of the airport in a way that is going to draw a much larger crowd of people on Memorial Day Weekend than would otherwise come if the airport were sitting there like it is any other day. Memorial Day Weekend is the beginning of the summer season, it's when many of the people that own residential properties around the airport and in this peaceful community, open up their homes and spend time with, with family and friends. And I think the real question for me is, do we want to sacrifice their peace and quiet by essentially giving permission to a, to another resident to have camping on their property and to have a large-scale outdoor event? And my view is that we should, we should reject the application because it's inconsistent with the Torch Lake master plan, and inconsistent with protecting the peace and quiet and, and peaceful use of the property of the adjoining landowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Jones.
Jerry Jones, 11085 Wood Special Drive, and I would support the use of the Memorial Day ongoings that Mr. Bays has had. Day ongoings that Mr. Baze is having. I have a question for him. The pancake breakfast, are the proceeds going to go to the fire department this year, or is it going to go to your four entities of the food banks? Okay, okay. So in the past, some of you who have addressed that, things have not happened at Torch Lake?
Can I ask you, I mean, for the public here, can you, instead of addressing them?
Oh, that's fine, yes. So, yes, there has been fly-ins, there has been car shows, there has been motorcycles there. We have also camped in our campers at the airport, and we've had a pancake breakfast. I've been involved for 15 years of mowing lawn and picking up many sticks at the airport. And some of us feel that it's a time for all of us to have fun, and it's only three to four days. So what is it really hurting when the majority of you haven't even lived here as long as some of the other people around this area? You know what you purchased. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Jorgensen.
For a minute, I thought maybe you were going to exercise your right to have everybody leave, but they've quieted down. I'm Mary Ann Jorgensen. I live on Lakeshore in El Crapace Township. I've worked at that airport for many, many years, since 1989, when we purchased it. And we have never, ever asked the township for a special use permit to entertain fellow pilots. I was surprised that Mr. Baze was required to do that. One of the people that spoke here today used to call and ask if they could have one of our Christmas trees, and now that they don't ask anymore, I guess they feel like they can complain about the airport. The money is going to support people that need food, need clothes, and you're, these people behind me that have been speaking are thinking only of themselves. This is just a short period of time in your life. My gosh. You might even have fun.
Thank you.
Okay, Ben, you're next.
Yeah? My name is Debbie Steggles, and I live here in Torch Lake Village, and I just want to comment about this. You know, I've been coming up here since I was born, and the airport has always been a fun festive, fun festive place for us to go to, and it was always a part of this area. So, I'm sorry, you all live by the airport, but it's always been there. So I guess what he's using it for is a limited couple days. Maybe they can come to an arrangement with the flying, I don't know. But to me, it seems like it's a wonderful event that he's wanting to share with the community. He wants to highlight and celebrate. Some people commented it's Memorial Weekend. Well, let me tell you, I have family members that are, were in the service. I've had family members who have died. So it just, you talk about different things. It's something we need to look at as a whole, and it's, I think it's a wonderful event to do, and it, it brings a lot of people together, it brings unity. Now, hopefully, we can come up with an arrangement that's good for everybody, but I don't understand why it has to be such a negative thing. And like she said, we've been doing it for years, and for a couple years, the airport wasn't being used, but now it is, and they're revitalizing it, and I think it's great.
Thank you.
Okay, Randy Bishop.
Randy Bishop, 11089 Woods Buster Drive. Hopefully, will live there to be a very old man. My father was shot by a Nazi soldier 80 years ago last month as a 19-year-old. He was shot in the leg, and he almost bled out. My wife, who owns a radio station with an FCC license, her father was in Battle of Midway, again, 80 years ago, June of this year. The FAA is a federally licensed airport managed and overseen by MDOT. Honestly, I don't even know why you filed a permit application. He has the right. As Mary Ann said, for years, they never had to pull a special use permit for anything. Why he felt necessary to work with you people, it's beyond me. It's a national holiday, it's a federally licensed airport, under FAA licensed federal regulations. It gives it, I'm, I'm talking, sir. No, I'm sorry.
Stop, stop.
The board? The board is what I was referring to, sir. You're part of the board, so suck it up. You're interrupting my time, Mr. Chairman, please.
Just continue with your comments, please.
Thank you. The point is, he didn't have to do this. He chose to do it. Personally, our FCC licensed radio station would like to contract with your airport to do a concert there every Friday this whole summer, and we don't need a permit. It's federal licenses on a federal holiday commemorating people who died for your right to sit on this board and for us to be here tonight and talk freely. It's called freedom of speech, and it's called freedom of assembly, which is guaranteed in our Constitution First Amendment. You don't have the right at a local level to undo those federal things. I would ask, to avoid any problems, that you simply approve the permit, work with Mr. Baze, have the event, raise money for four pantries of people who need food in this community. We have been through heck in Antrim County. We are world famous since November of 2020. It's time to heal the community. It's time to do something that looks good to the community and to our surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deb Graber.
I had another one come in.
Hi, Deb Graber, 1227 Beach Knott Lane. Can you hear me? Hi, Deb Graber, 1227 Beach Knott Lane. I know it's late. I don't know what's happened so far. Is it another board meeting? Apologize, we're not getting here sooner. Received the public, the recent public notice regarding a special use permit from Tim Baze, the pancake breakfast for a morning along with planes flying in and a car show sounds like a lovely morning in northern Michigan. Few conflicts that I saw with the zoning ordinance is camping is not allowed per the section 2.19 of the ordinance unless the owner, Torchport Airpark LLC, owns and has registered one recreational vehicle for that back runway. I mean, that's general provisions. That applies to every single ordinance, every single zoning district in our entire township that was just implemented last summer. Now, I know Mr. Baze feels that this is a condo association runway, and we're all responsible for the paving and the mowing and the, all that, but if he wants to make it a public runway, you know, let the public pay for it. But our condo association is paying for all the maintenance on it, on those runways. And as a payer of those fees, I prefer not to have camping behind my house. Section 2.19 states, "Use of a recreational vehicle as a temporary dwelling. Recreational vehicle shall be allowed, owned and registered to the owner of the property. One recreational vehicle may be used as a temporary dwelling for not more than one 30-day consecutive period in a year. A zoning permit is required. This shall be for personal use, not rented or leased to an occupant." And that was implemented July 20th, 2021, by this planning commission approved by the board. Food vendors, food trucks are not listed anywhere in the zoning ordinance, and if it's not listed in the ordinance as a use, it's usually not allowed. The notice also references a residential parcel 0514-32502500, which is a residential lot, used for overflow that's right along 31, and it's being included in a special use for this commercial outdoor event purpose. And special use of an outdoor event is not allowed in a residential zone, per ordinance section 7.02. The music venue, car show, could inhibit where planes, if planes were actually allowed to fly in for this fly-in, could tether tie down for the event while having their breakfast, unless the event that he's proposing is not for planes to fly in, but only for the paramotors that are trucked and trailer to the site. The other dilemma is the planes that are actually in the hangars, the few that we do have, thanks, Bill, that how is he supposed to get his plane out and maneuver through to actually hop on a runway if he wanted to fly his own personal aircraft? A special use runs with the land...
So, you need to finish up your comments, please.
Okay. If the special use was allowed, these events could be held all year long for multiple days at a time. Annual charity proceeds of $25,000 or more suggested by the applicant would require several events, not just one pancake breakfast. The applicant does not state the sources of the collected charity funds. Will he charge the campers, charge the takeoffs, runways?
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I miss anyone that was on the list? That's all that I have. I don't know, or is there anybody additional that wants to speak? You can pull out a comment card. Well, why don't you give your name and that, and then give us a card when, after you're done.
My name is Kelly Berry. My husband and I live at 5404 North US 31. Just wanted to say a little bit, he is a certified paramotor instructor, tandem, foot launch, and trike. We've traveled the country instructing people. You know, it takes anywhere from seven to 10 days to learn how to do this. We have never been confronted with this kind of, I don't even know how to say it, unwelcome, just anger regarding these, these vehicles, what do you want to call them? To me, it's, it's just because maybe people don't know about them, so we would be more than happy to entertain anyone that wants to learn more, or go for an instructional tandem flight, or talk about it, or just get to gain some knowledge. Because, you know, knowledge is power, and if you don't know things, they can be scary. They can be intimidating. You know, I'd be scared if I thought someone was going to fly into my house. Now, if you know where they're flying, and the rules and the legalities, FAR 101 and all this stuff, you know, you know that that's probably not going to happen. You're going to have a bigger chance of getting in a car accident on the road when you drive your vehicle every day. So I just wanted to shed some light on that, and I just, you know, really wanted to say something about the community and how it really kind of seems like unity is really missing from this. It just kind of is like whoever can get up and, and say whatever they want, and it may have no relevance at all, but it's the loudest voices that are heard, and I, I think often that that isn't what we need. You know, we need to be able to, to speak to another, to understand one another, and to respect one another. And if we don't know things, we have to be able to talk about them. So I just wanted to thank you for the time and hope we can get this figured out, because this would be huge for the community. I mean, it's a community event, it's charity, so let's get excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more comments? Sarah, we had a bit of written correspondence as well.
Yeah, there was, I think there's about nine, 10 letters on your desk here. They were in a packet related to Torchport.
And from, and I did go through those, it seems as though that the verbal comments essentially characterized most of the concerns that were raised in these. Was there anything that came forward that was unique, specific in the written comments that wasn't expressed verbally this evening? And I'd ask the question for the commission as well.
Not that I recall, a lot of it was related to, you know, the noise from the paramotors, and there was a little confusion about what's going on and how it was related to, you know, last year's application, which it's not, it's fully separate application, but I think everything's been captured, and we do have these for the file, you know, as well, so...
Okay, for the commission, is there any questions on the, in the submitted correspondence at this point? Because now I think we can move into deliberation here. Just a couple of words that I would like to say before we, as a committee here, evaluate the information before us, both the application from the applicant and the feedback from the community. First of all, you know, as I expressed to you early on, I'm a veteran, I'm very proud of that. I was fortunate not to have been injured. I served on a nuclear submarine. I worked my, you know what, off for a number of years, and I'm up here serving, not because I get paid well to do it, I've got many other things I could do with my time. I do it because I care about this community. I care about all of you. And decisions we might make this evening as a commission, you may not agree with them. For that, I don't know what to tell you. I'm sorry if it's not what you might want. I don't apologize for our actions. So I'm very proud to serve with these folks here, and it's important that you all realize that we'll stand by our decisions together, even if we don't agree amongst a commission here. Okay? So with that, we're going to go forward, and we're going to deliberate about this. We may have some clarifying comments for the applicant. It's possible we might have some clarifying items raised from the audience members. I'm going to do my best to try and accommodate those, because I want to have a dialogue. If it gets out of whack or out of control, then we're going to have to shut it down, and we won't be able to deliberate, and we won't be able to make a decision. So I just wanted to make that very clear. And I've worked hard myself tonight trying to balance the interaction with keeping control of things, so let's just keep going forward with that. So with that, I guess I'd open it up to the commissions for, for general questions on the application itself before we start going into criteria.
Andy, can I just make a comment really quick?
Sure.
So, and I don't recall, it seems like I said it somewhere in the staff report, but maybe not, I just want to point out, there, there are some events that the township, you know, can regulate, and there's events that, there are portions of the event that the township can't regulate. For example, the fireworks, by law, by state law, there are certain days that the township cannot tell someone they cannot discharge firearms, or fireworks. And these, you know, this day is one of those. He's falling under that law. These are the fireworks you go to the store, anybody can buy, and they can discharge under state law. So that component of it, I would encourage the planning commission not to focus on, you know, the fireworks part of it. If you want to talk about traffic related to that, because he is opening it to the public and inviting people in, and you want to make sure that there's appropriate parking or that parking's located, you know, I, you know, all for that, but stay away from limiting the fireworks or anything like that, because as a township, we cannot do that. And then, you know, the aviation activities, you know, as well, those are something that have been there, it's historical, that's why it was done last year. Last year, there wasn't a permit required, because everything that was done, I should, let me back up, everything about the camping had been, didn't, everything about the camping didn't require a permit, because it had been done in the past. There was a, not a negotiation, but the attorneys all talked, we had a meeting, it was, you know, worked through that. We did have individuals out on site to make sure everything complied with the requirements from the township. The camping last year did have land use permits, one on each lot for that camping. That language has such changed in the ordinance, which is why the camping is included... That language has such changed in the ordinance, which is why the camping is included in this kind of outdoor event permit to be allowed. Because as the applicant, he couldn't pull individual permits for each parcel, because he didn't own all of the campers. That's why it's getting pushed out into the commercial component, where in the commercial district, we do allow campgrounds as a special use. He's not doing this as a year-round, full-time campground. This is just under the outdoor event section for these four days, asking for the approval for this camping, for, you know, on that property, for that commercial component. So you're really kind of looking at, and I guess if I forget one of the events, you know, the pancake breakfast, the music, the food, the camping, there's a drive-in.
That's the car show drive-in.
Okay. That car show drive-in component, and then kind of the interaction with the pilots, you know, that kind of open to the public to come in and see what's going on. And that was available last year, kind of an informal arrangement, but this year, it's, you know, more formalized, and again, why, why he's here to ask for these, you know, couple of days. So as I said before, it's limited to the days requested, the times requested, for, you know, any of those additional uses. And if you wanted to do it again in the future, change it, or he'd have to come back and see you.
Sarah, was there anything else regarding the application process or information that, I should have asked you this at first, that you should, you want to bring to our attention?
I don't believe so. I think that this is, like I mentioned before, it, it's one of those uses that we're trying to fit into this special use component that can make it a little bit difficult. It's one of the things, when I first was hired as the planner, that I said to Bob, I go, this needs to be somewhere else. Putting it in the zoning ordinance makes it very difficult to function. We need to make it as a separate ordinance, deal with it in a different way. So I kind of feel your pain in that process, you know, in the process, while it feels a little bit difficult and awkward, I, I agree. Hopefully, it'll be something we can work on and kind of refine, and, you know, moving forward. So I don't think there was anything, I didn't answer some of the findings, because I wanted to hear public input, get your input on that, and then you can give me some guidance on some of those items.
So before we dive in, I do have a few questions, and I also noticed the, the signature on file, and then the $450 from the escrow. Can you explain those two matters?
Sure, there's a, I mean, we have a signature in multiple locations. He filled out, you know, 32 applications last year, something like that. There is a letter, I don't know that it's in your packet, it talked about applying and related to the fee and using this escrow, if any existed, to apply towards his application. So I would consider that signature on, you know, it's a separate letter, we do that with land use permits. If, if the property owner is not signing the application, they can sign a form that says I authorize so-and-so to pull the permit for me.
So, and why is there escrow money? What's that in relation to?
That is left over from the rezoning applications. I don't know all of the detail, I mean, I don't, I'm not the accounting side of it. But during this process, you know, it came to light that we still did have some escrow funds, and we could use, you know, you could use that to apply towards it and return the rest of it. I don't know where all of that stands. That's outside.
And that's, and that's outside the purview of this commission, but it does seem pertinent as something to, we need to figure out, so we'll take that off.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's more of a office, internal organization situation. All that you need to know is that the fee has been paid for the application, therefore, you know, you can move forward and consider it.
So I don't know, I have another question. The county, why was it referred, and maybe this is a question for the applicant, the referred to county permits for camping, when we're actually, maybe both of you can touch on that?
So, I, I don't know why it was written county, because, you know, talking with M.D., it's, I mean, it's been, camping's been an approved use by the state of Michigan on the airport for decades. And again, on, on one of the pages, you'll see right in the state of Michigan's, what do you call that thing? The aeronautical chart? It lists right on there from the state of Michigan that camping's already allowed. So I'm not sure why it says, says that.
Well, when we had talked about it before you applied, you had said you were getting a temporary campground permit from the county.
Yes, so that's Antrim County.
Yes.
So that's something, if we wanted to add that on, I mean, we could do that from Antrim County. It's a county level, it's already approved by the state, so I don't know who trumps who in that matter, but statewide, like I said, I met with the state of Michigan yesterday, he said, listen, it's been approved with us for, you know, decades. I think I've even got an aeronautical chart from 1983 in my truck that shows it on there from back then.
Okay, thank you for that. Other questions for the commission before we go into specifics of criteria and so forth?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do we, do we as a board have the authority to tell you, you can't fly, fly paramotors?
You do not.
That's what I thought.
So, so that's why I apologize if it offended somebody out there that I, that I stood up. I, I fore requested a lot of the, the letters that were sent in advance, and that would, that's what I was going from in, in beginning, to try to offset or overcome some of the obstacles that people had, and flying is one of them. We, you know, try to limit the flying. You cannot limit flying at an airport. The board has no jurisdiction of that. You know, just like the fireworks. And, and so when I, when I wrote the plan for the weekend, I, I just wrote it out to, to just give you guys a big sense of the entire event. Looking at it now, I should have just limited to pancake breakfast and car show, right? Because it's muddying the water. Talking about the fireworks and talking about paramotors or fly-in is irrelevant in, in regards to this. So that's what I wanted to make my point of.
Other questions of the commission, Barbara?
Yeah, I have a question, and I don't know who can answer this, but when did the residential airpark become an airport?
The airport has been in existence for 80 years. The airpark was added, I think Marianne and Duane did that in like 1989. And so somebody had made a comment that it was made residential. A small section within the commercial district was made residential. All the surrounding property is still commercial, and that's what we're using for this event.
Andy, we should close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Oh, yes, thank you for that. Yes, the public portion of the comment, the public hearing is now closed. Thanks.
I'm sorry, I was. Standards, yep, it is, it starts on page nine of 13, the same standards we went through last time. I don't know if, it's up to the planning commission how you want to do that, if you just want to say, you know, standard number one, anybody have any comments, or if you want to read them like you did at the, for the last application.
I'm going to, some more this time. But I think Bill just stepped away for a second. Yeah, I think we, we should do that.
Mm-hmm, three minutes.
I mean, while, oh, there he is.
It wasn't, it wasn't on before, and I apologize for that. But it is on now.
Okay, so we're now going to go through each standards for site plan approval or consideration. It is going to be a little bit awkward, some of these, because of the nature of this particular request. But item number one, standard number one, all elements of the site plan should be efficiently organized in relation to topography and so forth. So you can see Sarah's interpretation here, or additional information is needed regarding camping plans and parking plans. All activities are located on the commercially zoned properties.
Yeah, and when I said that about the camping and the parking, is that it's kind of, parking is here, but it's not, my concern is, I guess, more traffic management, so maybe a traffic management plan, if you're gonna, and I guess I should, if you're comfortable with that, where you say, okay, we're gonna have somebody out there to help direct people where to park, we need to make sure that there's places to drive for the fire trucks and things like that, because it is all grass and kind of temporary parking. My concern is, in orderly fashion, and you can't delineate spaces very easily unless you are going to paint them or something like that.
We will, just like last year, we had them all cautioned off, and everybody knew where everything was at. And, and just, because I'm remembering this, just so everybody knows, the township still maintains two 15,000-gallon tanks on property for fire.
So probably just those details in the parking, if you can give that to us in writing, so I can put it in the file, on whatever your plan is, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, any other questions on the, from the commission on item number one? I should call it standard. Standard number two, landscape. Will preserve minimizing tree and soil removal. This is viewed as satisfied. There's a, really, there is no change to landscaping or trees in this case. I do have one question, I suppose if there are an issue around a fire or something created by the fireworks, obviously that could have an impact on vegetation. What is the, we've been under a fire ban or a fire warning recently, so what, what happens?
So I've been working with the fire department. Obviously, they've, they've approved what we've done, and we're watching the DNR ban burn, and if there's a ban burn on, there's a ban burn on. They won't, they won't happen.
Won't happen, okay. Are there any other questions from the commission on that? Okay, number three, stormwater. There is no impervious surface proposed for this temporary use. That makes sense, so that one's satisfied. Any concerns there? Commission?
No.
Jason, you good with it?
Yeah.
Okay, number four, site plan should provide reasonable visual and sound privacy for all dwelling units located to win. So this one's partially satisfied.
I think with the, with the parking plan, and as long as you're comfortable with the limitations on the music, that would be provided onsite for any neighboring surrounding properties.
So help me there, what are the restrictions on music?
The music was on Saturday from 4:00 to 8:00.
There was some consideration that might be a live band, but not certain. Is that true?
Not, yeah, not certain. I mean, it would be nice, there's, there's a lot of local artists that, it would be fun just to bring in some local artists, but if not, you know, if there's things just happening, just have some music playing.
Okay.
Any questions on?
Any questions on number four, concerns? Number five, this is emergency vehicle access. The fire department has reviewed the plans and has no issues. Any concerns or questions from the commission on that? Hearing none, I'm going to move on to number six, so please tell me if you've got any questions on these. Number six, every structure or dwelling unit should have access to a street, walkway, and so forth. Those new structures are proposed. Hearing no issues from the commission. Going to move on to number seven, pedestrian circulation system, which is insulated from vehicle circulation system. So this was delineated, and will be delineated, delineated, it was last year, correct?
Correct.
So I guess, Mr. Baze, if, if your event were so successful that you had way more people than you had envisioned, how would you, what would you do to manage the traffic? How would you get control of it, so it just doesn't mushroom?
Well, there's only, you know, so much parking in and around the area, I, I guess people would just have to carry on, because there's nowhere to go, right? I, I don't know if I'm answering that properly, but I think crowd management would handle itself, because there's nowhere to park.
Yeah, I think the concern would be from a safety perspective, if it drifted off on a 31, there is the Bay Colony Road there, so that would be something that we'd have to keep an eye on.
Kind of like harbor days when everybody parks on 31?
Yeah.
So which one are we going to see? That was number seven. So any other questions on the, from the commission? Okay, moving on to number eight. Loading and unloading areas of outside storage activities, or outside storage areas, including areas of storage of trash. So trash removal, Sarah, what was the item there?
Yeah, I just didn't see any details related to trash, what your plan was, if you're going to have bins, and how that all is going to function.
Yep, it should have been written on there, we have.
Oh, was it? Did I miss it?
It said multiple.
Well, multiple locations, but you're just going to have?
Contracted in with, is it?
Like American or something, they're going to just put their totes?
I thought it was on there too.
Okay.
Someone must have stopped.
Okay, but that's what, you're going to use the rolling totes, I get, and just throw them around, and then they'll pick them up?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, number nine, exterior lighting. There's no additional lighting proposed. So I'm assuming there was no concerns or questions on that from the commission. Move on to number 10. All approaches to paved public roads should be surfaced. I'm not going to try and pronounce the bit word there. Existing roads will be used, so I don't anticipate any issues with that particular standard. Number 11, arrangement of public or common ways for vehicular and pedestrian circulation. Again, we've talked about this. You're going to use the existing roads. I guess maybe the only thing I would emphasize there, that, and I, I hear Jason's point about harbor days, it happens down there and it gets clogged up. I have often, we always go to harbor days, and I often leave there, and it's dark, and kids, you know, shoot down around the traffic, they bust out on 31, and it would just be so tragic to have an event to be marked by some horrible accident. So it's something to really be cognizant of to manage, if it starts to take mushroom, and we can't control parking.
Yeah, no, no doubt about it. Last thing we want is something happens, you know, that's tragic to anybody, but, so if, if you're really talking the fireworks, I mean, that's probably the, the biggest draw in. The, the good thing is, we've got a lot of parking for the fireworks, up and down the taxiways, and in the runways that are closed, so there's a lot of parking for that specific thing.
Okay, are there any more questions around number 10? Number 11, oops, we just covered that one, so I'm sorry, we're up number, we're number 12 now, excuse me. Number 12. All streets and roads should be developed in a manner that there's no existing roads or common ways proposed, so this is, this one is satisfied. Any questions from the commission on that one? Moving on to number 13. Water supplies that are a sufficient quantity, which are easily accessible. The fire department is not requiring any additional fire suppression for the outdoor event, presumably because if there is a fire danger, or a warning of such, then the fireworks would not occur.
Plus, like I said, within, you know, 1,000 feet or so, there's two 15,000-gallon tanks that are maintained.
Okay, number 14. Buildings are adequately screened, there's no new proposed buildings here, so it's kind of irrelevant. Number 15. Site plans should conform to all applicable requirements of the township. County and state and federal statutes and approval should be conditioned on the approval receiving all necessary permits for final site plan approvals. We've got the fire, what other permits are there?
The, the county camping permit, that was the other one that I was thinking of for that. I don't know that there would be anything else. I mean, the fireworks is not a permit, but, you know, you have to comply with that state law, state requirement.
So not hearing anything else of, any commission, any commission questions?
That thing was full last year.
Yeah. So I guess we move into the special use. The special use, so ways, special use standards. Number one, the special use proposed must be consistent with or promote the purpose and intent of the ordinance in zone district in which the use is proposed. So this is kind of a long drawn out thing here.
Yeah, give me some action. What are you thinking? I mean, we do allow outdoor events in the commercial district on the commercial properties, you know, as far as for the zone and the district. So these uses that we were talking about, the camping, I mean, outdoor events in general, that is a use that's allowed with a special use permit in that zoning district.
So other questions or comments from the commission on this? Number one.
And do you feel with, we haven't really talked about any conditions, but do you feel either as proposed or with conditions that this is something that kind of meets your ordinance and the intent for that zoning district? It's the other part of that question.
So there were, there was some information in there about, we talked about the trash removal already. And I did see something in the application about. Okay. Porta John's type thing, correct?
Sarah, is this where you're suggesting we propose some conditions? Or are you just asking the general question, does it meet it? Does the application meet what we're looking for? And then we talk about some conditions we might propose?
Yeah, I mean, I like to look at it as, can you, you know, if you can just flat out answer, answer the standard and say, yes, it meets it, then it's good. If you say, well, I feel like it kind of meets it, but if we did this, this and this. So then I start writing down your conditions so we make sure we get them.
So one condition, I believe it's in the application already, but one condition is that all camping occurs on the commercial property.
That is in the application, but we can add that too, just to be clear.
Now what about fireworks launch? What, help with the, and the fireworks aspect of it, but it, commercial or residential, does it matter?
The, where the fireworks, discharging the fireworks is not in your wheelhouse.
Okay. Okay.
I feel like this thing meets the purpose.
Any other conditions? Oh. So the So Barbara, you had a question?
Yeah, I didn't hear what Jason said.
I said, I feel like it meets it and we need to move on to number two.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions from the commission on that? Any conditions that you would think we should impose on this?
Are you talking about standard number one or?
Yes, it is standard number one, but it might fall in general because it's kind of amorphous how they bleed together here.
So everybody agrees with Jason that it's met?
Yep, number one is met. Moving on to number two. Use of adjacent lands. As long as it's consistent with what he's put in the application, as far as there's boundaries there. Yes. I guess ask the commission if there's any questions on this? Concerns, conditions that should be raised?
I don't understand how this could possibly be compatible with the adjacent residential lots, which would seem to me that is what number two is asking about.
So I guess, Sarah, if you look at number two and you say, where does this, where would it be incompatible? Would be potential noise, could be hazards of, that would be, like if somebody did some of these things and they had a small piece of commercial property and tried to shoehorn a bunch of people in there, that might be the issue. So I guess, but at the end of the day, you know, how do we, or how can we manage or view that? When people have, people can launch fireworks, people can, you know, there has been car shows there before, there has been pancake breakfast there before, there's been Coast Guard helicopters flying in there before. So So I guess I'm just asking for thoughts. I mean, Barbara, help me, I mean, what your question is there, if you had anything in mind from a restriction standpoint to address that?
I don't know how you could address this, what I'm saying. I don't know how you can make this compatible with residential lots in that area. Just because of the noise, the hazard, the congestion, all of it. I don't understand how that could be made compatible with local residential lots.
Before I moved to my new house, I lived very next to Hubble's wedding barn and that's noisy, it's loud, everybody's screaming, there's congestion, cars pulling in and out, and that's smack dab in the middle of residential. So if that's compatible, then this should be compatible. Listen, they're not taking public comment right now. Sorry.
Yeah, I'm not, I agree with Mr. Willard though. I don't know what relevance Hubble's wedding barn or whatever was.
Well, you just said noise and cars, confusion and whatnot. I mean, they have the same thing going on there.
Part of the issue here is we have this general application and we have, and you, Sarah, at the very beginning said this is kind of clunky. It doesn't really fit, like when you're, you know, putting a new building or a new business in place or something like that. It's an event. So that's part of what we're dealing with here. We're dealing with a special event with a restricted timeframe. And I grant and realize it's awkward, it's uncomfortable, it's, some ways it feels very good, in some ways it's challenging for the community. I know, I live on Bayview Drive, I live around Grand Travers Bay, so I can understand the aspects of this. So Any other thoughts on this?
Maybe I can help. I think it fits with number two. It's been an airpark, there's been residential uses, there's been pancake breakfast. I think some of the concerns expressed by some of the comments, some of the emails have more to do with three about the adverse impact on the environment, more than the land uses. And it could be the noise. And perhaps with number four, we haven't gotten that yet with, with the public services. But I think most of the comments seem to be centered around, there were comments for and against, but most of them, I think, come to three. So I, to move on with what you're, what we're trying to accomplish, I think, I think the permits are compatible with number two. Especially use standard two. Simply because it's an existing use, there's been events there before and there's been residential uses around it. But, but the particular activities proposed in the application, to me, have some issues with number three where I think there'd be conditions.
Apparently, Suri does not agree. So
So I think I'm hearing three that say this is satisfied. I've heard Barbara say that it's not, so majority. Denise, we haven't heard anything from, but I think for this standard, there's at least a majority that find that this standard has been met. And you might have to, that might be what the result is, kind of the straw poll, majority says this, but not everybody agrees on it, and that's fine.
And that's, that's a fair way of looking at it, that makes sense. So Barbara, you struggle with it. Denise, I have not heard you comment on this.
I, I don't have any, oh, I'm sorry. I don't have any complaints about this. I think it meets it and I think we should go, keep going forward.
Okay, so let's, Barbara, I do understand your comment there, but we, I think we have a majority that support that it fits with number two. Let's move to number three. Special use proposed must not adversely impact the environment.
I think it clearly does impact the environment, the noise level for one. And it's not confined to that piece of property. I mean, the paramotors are flying all over the area.
So again, I just want to make sure that she understands the aviation and the fireworks have nothing to do with this. It's the camping, it's the pancake breakfast, it's, it's the festivities, the outdoor activity.
Okay, so we, we are not gonna take any more public comment at this point. We're, we've gotta move on this. From the standpoint of, we have to finish our deliberation, I mean.
Yeah, I'm trying to respond to the application. And the application has a bunch of activities in it. I think there are adverse impacts with the activities in the application. I think some conditions, limitation of hours for some of the activities that create noise, that'd be a part of the application. But I'm, and I'm looking at you instead of the applicant, because I'm kind of confused about why it's in the application if it's not, if it's not part of what we're supposed to decide on. Now, I will look at you. If, if you meant what you said, that you want to work with the township, you'd agree to some conditions that would apply to some things you're saying aren't a part of this. But if you didn't mean what you said, you're gonna fly sunrise to sunset anyway. But my condition on number three would be to limit the hours of the paramotor, so the event can still happen, because it's good for charity. There's a lot of fun activities in it. But it's not planes flying on runways with certain patterns, it's all over. And if you, again, if you meant what you said, want to work with the township, and you want to you want to compromise so that people who are for this and against it see, all right, well, there's some working room here for you. And that'd be a condition I'd want to put in three to help address the adverse impacts because it's, but it's about noise, particularly early, early and late, late.
Can I comment on that? Of course. Born and raised on a cherry farm, you know how loud a cherry sprayer is? And that's when they spray, first thing in the morning and last time at night because there's no wind. That's, that is way louder than a paramotor. So, and I can hear cherry sprayers from where I'm at, right in my house. So I don't agree with that as far as, and I don't even know if we have the authority to limit the time on the paramotors.
I appreciate your comments, Bill. I do. To me, it's like we're trying to address a special use permit round and use, you know, looking at things like noise and things of that sort. You know, I find it problematic from the standpoint of, you know, I, I don't see how that, I mean, I guess I appreciate where you're coming from, but I struggle with the ability to hone it down. I mean, we can certainly put a condition on it and talk with the applicant about it. So
Yeah, that's what I proposed. You said you want to work with the township, and I think that'd be a way that the township would say, okay, you mean what you said.
Yeah, and so one, one thing, I think I want to play off what Jason had mentioned. There could be a chance that zero flying happens that weekend. It's all weather related. And if it's anything that, like this last week, no one's getting in the air. So it's all weather driven. You know, you could be flying in the middle of the day or early morning, late night, it depends on the weather. So that's, it makes it really tough. Just like last year, there was probably only a maximum of an hour or two a day that any flying even took place because of the weather.
But kind of playing that back, if the weather were fantastic all weekend, they could be up there, sunrise to sunset, plus or minus 30 minutes.
It doesn't happen that way. It's almost a physical impossibility between these two lakes to have no wind at this time of year. I mean, again, because of the bodies of water and you understand, you know, the thermals that take place, the ground heats up faster than the water, so it creates thermals, people just won't fly in the, in the middle of the day.
Okay, so number three. I would like to hear from each member on number three because that's a touchy one. Barbara, what do you think on number three?
Well, I think there's some other environmental impacts, like we have bald eagles that nest in that area, not necessarily on that land, but in that area. There's a herd of deer that live in the woods on and near the airport. I don't know, I just, I just, I just think it's totally incompatible with the location to have the kinds of activities. And it is mostly the paramotoring because it is so loud, it's so obnoxious, it can go on, you know, like you said, every hour for the four days if the weather's good. So I just don't think it's compatible with that, that neighborhood and that area. And I'm a little bit concerned about the representations that the applicant has made to us about who's in charge of what and, and all of that. Because it seems to me, over the course of the year that I've been on this planning commission, that this has gone from being an airpark to being an airport, that has gone from being subject to the zoning ordinances of the township to no control because it's MDOT and FAA. I'm not sure about any of that stuff. I mean, I would like to have some assurance that that's in fact the case. It just seems to me that the applicant, very clever and very intelligent as he is, is finding ways to make this into something that it's not, never was, and to take the authority away from the township to regulate anything to do with it. So I'm just suspicious. I don't trust Mr. Bays. I've heard him say a number of things that he's not followed through on.
So one thing I would like to add, she may have cleverly missed the number four, conflict of interest, by coming in late today. I voiced my concern on the last meeting that there was a conflict of interest because her husband radically voices opinion against me during the last meeting, and you can kind of see it's happening now. I don't know what I did to make them mad or what I did that I didn't, or I did something that I should have or didn't do. I really, I'm not sure. I haven't cleverly changed anything. I didn't name this thing an airpark. Y'all did. You guys approved it. I haven't changed anything.
And I'd like to add that the we didn't know the state of Michigan was going to provide this information to us. They came to do the inspection on the airport. They're the ones that provided this information. We were the ones that were responsible and handed to you and get signature receipt to send back to the state of Michigan, alerting you of what your responsibilities are as the township. That didn't fall on us, so don't say it was cleverly done.
Whatever.
So we're gonna
Certainly is.
We are going to make a roll call vote on number three here. Not a vote, but a roll call acknowledgement of number three, whether we agree or not, and whether this, whether it adversely impacts the environment and can move on from it.
Yeah, I think you should say, is this standard satisfied or not satisfied? That's what you're gonna voice your thought on. Because that, I think that's nice and clear. Is this satisfied or not satisfied?
Okay, so I guess, Barbara?
All right, number three, I don't think it's satisfied.
Okay, Denise?
I think it's satisfied.
Bill?
Not satisfied.
Jason?
Absolutely satisfied.
And chairman says it's satisfied. So there's one, two, I guess, three, two on that. Okay. Number four, the special use proposed must not unduly burden or exceed the ability of public services or facilities to handle the anticipated needs of the community. I think I would just say there, the fire is a big one. Fire chief on that.
And he, there was a letter in your packet, I believe, that said that he took a look at it. So he's satisfied with that.
Okay. Any other questions of the commission on number four? Okay. So what conditions do we have thus far?
I had the couple that were in the packet, so outside agency permits, the activities are limited to those contained. The activities are limited to those contained in the application. The outdoor event will occur between May 27 through May 30, and we can add in the 2022 there. The hours, we didn't really talk about the hours, so I don't know if you need any more defining than what's in the application, because they did provide hours for some of the uses there for that. Then we do need a parking plan provided prior to, and then all camping is on the commercial property.
And then a condition of traffic management and/or directing traffic away in the event, the event, in the event, the event gets to a point where people are starting to drift over onto 31. Somebody would have to be designated within the management of the event to address and point traffic away. Okay. So at this point, any other questions or comments on this application? So Sarah, did you have a motion written here at some?
Yeah, there's a recommended motion there, and then, the only thing I would add to that is, at the end, after the parcel numbers and all of that, and I'm sorry you have to say all of that, because people sue townships all the time, and it has to be specific, so, the outdoor event over the, and I would just add the 2022 Memorial Day weekend as presented.
And I do, one other one that just occurred to me, I do think it would be, because of the sensitivity of this and everything, to have a hard signature on the application, specific to this. I assume that would be a condition that the applicant would easily do.
Yep, I'll add that as number eight. So, and I guess I forgot at the end of that, recommended motion would be as presented, as it meets the criteria listed in the staff report.
So would somebody make, anyone recommend a motion here?
Do we discuss conditions after we make a motion?
Oh.
I mean, if you need to add more.
We can, if we want to add more, but add them now. I think if there's more to add, then we should add them now, and then we can make the motion and discuss it one more time.
I have a couple, one, I think Mr. Stroudine made a good point on some of the details of the application. We covered most of them, but I think dates and years of the event days. So it covers this particular year, and I would add to number four, hours of operation for each of the activities, and limit the paramotor from nine to five.
How do others feel about the nine to five limitation on paramotors? So Sarah, if the township were to do an applica, approve something with that, he could, the applicant, basically, the pancake breakfast could be shut down. What were the two events that they have the jurisdiction over in this case?
The pancake breakfast, the car show with the drive-in, food truck, music, camping.
Jason, I don't understand, it's part of the application. So, because it's written in the application, I'm trying to make a good decision for the township based on what's in the application. Saying, we can't, we can't have it, then why is that in the application? So I'm just trying to make a condition based on what's in the application that includes paramotors as well as a bunch of other activities.
I understand what you're saying, but we're being told the township can't make the decisions on the airpark because it's state or federal or whatever.
But that information wasn't part of the application. So, I heard that, but I don't know that, because I haven't read that. Well, I'd like to see it, and then maybe we make the decision then, but right now, it's something that we were told it wasn't part of the application, and I'm trying to do what planning commissioner is supposed to do, respond to the application. And there's a part in here for conditions, so I'm placing that as a condition. If there's some document that we see, that's, that I can read, say, oh, I guess, and then I might say, then strike that from the application, because right now, in the application, there's a list of activities, say, I'm applying for an application for a special use permit to do certain things on certain days at certain times. But then we're hearing in the, in the, you know, in the proposal, that this doesn't apply, and this doesn't apply, and this doesn't apply, which is why I'm saying, you say you want to work with the township, let's say that that was fact, working with the township might be to negotiate. Otherwise, I'm not sure why you said you worked with the township. So, I'd like to see the document, and maybe I'd strike that from my proposed condition change, but right now, that's my, that's what I'm proposing before we make a motion.
So Sarah, what would it take to just take that off of that? Again, I wrote that so the township, everybody would know the whole weekend. Not specific that I wanted you to approve aviation and supersede the state and feds.
No, I think there's a couple of things at play here. One is that, you know, by leaving, essentially, the applicant is in a rough spot. If he doesn't put it on the application and then something happens there, everybody says, well, you didn't tell us about that, you don't know. He puts it on the application, and we say, you don't have approval over this. You know, and now you have this part. What I can tell you is that, based on last year, is that the township can't regulate those paramotors, and.
I understand that, and understand the spot you're in. But again, I'm gonna hold you what you said, I want to work with the township, but it sounds like you don't really. You say, never mind, just take it away. Anything that, any compromise or condition that suggested, never mind, I'm just gonna strike it out and I'm doing it anyway, which is not the same as, I want to work with the township. That's where I'm confused, is what we're trying to make a decision about. And while you're here saying, I want to work with the township, I'm proposing a compromise, and you're saying, I'm not taking it.
Again, because you're picking, you know, nine to five during the middle of the day, where there's 95% chance that no flying could take place. So then you're saying, we want all the positive, but we don't want any negative. And that's the only negative anybody has in this whole thing, is the noise, which unfortunately, with an airport, can't be regulated.
So I have a couple of thoughts about this condition. One is this is a condition proposed by Bill. Let's see what the other commissioners think about it, and see if there's a majority decision on this condition for the time. And then, once we get that decision, I have a couple more thoughts.
Okay, so, I agree that we could go down to each commission member to look at that particular condition. I'd also would, this probably tips my hand of kind of how I view it, but I would say that it's almost like that aspect of the application, and I'm getting tired now, so I'm probably gonna have a hard time saying this clearly. It's that particular aspect of the application is something that he didn't have to put in there. And so, a couple things. One, we could, we could either take that out of the application, or two, keep it in the application and just say, we want to see the documentation of it as part of the subject approval. That's the way of looking at it. So we move ahead tonight, and knowing that we want to see that and understand that. But to me, it's a little bit like, the items that we know we have, quote jurisdiction, that's probably not the right word, over, we're gonna hold those things hostage to the other events that we can't. I guess that's the way I'm trying to think about it. So it's like, if he never would have said that, I tend to agree with Sarah, that we wouldn't have had this discussion. We would have raised the concerns over the noise, which I can totally understand where it comes from. But it feels like we're trying to use an overall special event thing, especially that permit application and our, and our ability to say yes or no because of one aspect of it that we're worried about. And if he just didn't have his event and just had a bunch of paramotor show up, they could be flying around, and we couldn't do anything about it. I don't know about noise ordinances and things of that nature, maybe that's another course we can look at, but I don't think we have that in place.
We don't have a noise ordinance.
So, I don't know if that, kind of a long-winded way of saying that, I get where you're coming from, and I can appreciate it. I don't know how we can manage this particular situation around that particular area. And I acknowledge it's the whole notion of working together, I get where you're coming from. So, so let's go across the group here. Barbara, I hate to keep picking on you first, but I guess I'll do.
Rather than making a condition, I would rather have it be, you know, give the information that we need so that we're comfortable with the fact that the FAA and MDOT are the controlling jurisdictions, and that we don't have any authority over certain things. And then, you know, fine. But I, no, I just would, I would like to have something besides Mr. Bays just saying it.
Again, it's in the package, I turned it in.
I don't have it.
Yesterday, or it might not be in the package. I'm sorry, Jackie received it and signed off on it yesterday. I can give you a copy of it tonight if you want. Yeah, I gave it to, she has it, I mean, if you want to read it.
Jackie has it? Yes. Let's put that one aside and come back to other ones while she's doing that.
So Bill, while Andy's reading that letter, what were your other conditions? I got the add years to the application, and then nine to five for the paramotors. What was the, there was another one in there?
I think that was all. It was the dates and times of the event, and, yeah, thanks.
I'm just gonna hand this around to the, to the commission to look at. Jackie, do you have a copy or a couple other copies so we could speed up the review?
Is that all you want?
I don't see anything in here about paramotors and hours. I see contour lines that, I'm not sure what they mean. I do see approach patterns on runways that paramotors don't, don't apply to. And then I have no idea what the tiny, 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 tiny little type is on here. There's no way. So, I don't see anything that says that paramotors are part of what, it's never addressed in this letter. Or hours of operation, or any of that, so it's a.
So you're saying that it doesn't, it does not say specifically about paramotors.
It's not in the letter, I'm not sure what the other two documents are, the other two pages.
Does the applicant want to respond to that?
If it's in this, honestly, I don't know if anybody could read that.
So that is exactly how the state provided it to me, they hand delivered it to me at the airport yesterday morning. It doesn't say that airplanes can fly in there, or helicopters, or paramo, it doesn't say anything in terms of that. MDOT and FAA regulate aeronautical use, and that is what's spelled out in there. Paramotors fall under FAR, Federal Aviation Regulation 103. And again, aviation use on a public airport, I mean, I mean, we gotta use some common sense.
I've got a lot of common sense. I don't see any, I don't see anything that you're saying in here. I'm just telling you what you handed me is not what you're saying.
It tells you it's a public use airport.
And again, if it's in this document, then I apologize, but I really.
So a couple of things. One, there's a question from the audience, and the gentleman's been very patient.
Yeah, we can't, we're gonna be here forever if we do that.
Not, no, there hasn't, just the applicants, and the actual staff members back there. So, so what's, what we're, I think what we're looking or saying here, Mr. Bays, is that it talks about it being an airport or airpark, airport, and, but it doesn't specifically talk about paramotors in regards to that. And what you're saying is, is that, well, it doesn't talk about helicopters either. I heard you say that. So, where is the, what we need is documentation or something that makes a link between paramotors following under the same kind of regulations as it relates to an airport.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Paramotor pilots are regulated by the FAA, Federal Aviation Regulation 103 for ultralight vehicles.
Yeah, so again, it's a public use protected airport, and all aviation activities are allowed there. Paramotors happen to fall under Federal Aviation Regulation 103. Other aviation fall under maybe Part 91 or Part 135. It's all relevant, it's a public use airport. I guess that's what that thing identifies, and, you know, basically puts a township on notice that it has to be included in the master plan. And part of the fight over the last year was, it was like I was going against the master plan for wanting to do aviation purposes on an airport, because it wasn't in the master plan. That letter says it has to be included in the master plan, as a protected airspace. And again, aviation use is allowed, all aviation use, whether it's a hot air balloon, or, you know, a fighter jet, although a fighter jet's not coming into a grass runway.
May I ask as well, Sarah mentioned that last year it was approved, that it was something that was an allowable thing, the paramotors. So why is there a big stink about it now, saying that you want to limit it, or it can happen, or can't happen, or we have to prove this? Attorneys were involved in this last year, and the paramotors were an eligible source to be flying in and out of that airport.
I'm not trying to make a big scene. The applicant said he wanted to work with the township. The concern the township has is, it's not about whether it's consistent with the master plan, is it consistent with sleep? Is it consistent with sleep? So, if you want to work with the township, you can agree to some limited hours, but I have already heard it, don't need to say it again. I'm not gonna work with the township, I didn't mean I wanted to work with township, it's already approved use. Whenever we want to fly, when the weather's right, we're gonna do it, and if the neighbors don't like it, tough.
So, so I think, I think at this point, I think we should go back to those standards and vote, and then kind of see where we are after those, because you had a condition, Bill, that was about the nine, I think you said, nine to five, or? Nine to five, what? Let's vote on that particular condition. Barbara, what is your position on that condition? Should we add that to the necessary conditions for approval?
Sure.
You say yes?
Yes.
Denise?
I'm confused.
Okay, tell me why.
Well, I mean, it's kind of like, well, who do you believe here? I think I believe you.
I, I'm, I, I think I believe you. I mean, I think it's, it's not in our control. It's like the fireworks. It's not something we should be trying to regulate. I totally understand you're, it would be nice if that was something that was agreeable. But I don't think it's in our jurisdiction to even ask. So that's kind of where-
So you would say, do not impose it as a condition?
I don't think we can, but, so yes.
Bill, you want, obviously, you're sticking to, you're sticking to that, correct? Jason?
I'm with the, Denise.
Okay. And Chairman is also there. I do not think we should impose it as a condition. So, are there any other aspects of this? So can I have a motion? Let me see here. Motion to approve with conditions as outlined by Sarah's recommendation here. So we need somebody to read that and make a motion here.
I don't have it written down what you wanted added to.
When you get to over, pause.
When I get to over?
At the end of the second paragraph.
I make a, I make a motion to approve with conditions, deny SUP-
Not the deny part.
That's why I didn't want to do this. Motion to approve with conditions, did I read the SUP part? SUP 2022-03 for Torchport Air Park at 1391 North US 31. Parcels number 05-14-770-015-00, and 05-14-770-014-00 for outdoor event-
Over the 2022?
Over the 2022 Memorial Weekend.
As presented.
As presented.
And then, as it meets the criteria.
As it meets the criteria. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Do a roll call vote? And Jason will start with you.
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Denise?
Yes.
No.
Chair says yes.
Three to two. Motion passes.
Okay, so, um, we have a few more items on our agenda, because that clears the new business. Sarah, I'm going to suggest we, uh, push the, on, the annual report on to a future meeting. Could be, may not be tomorrow.
Yeah, probably June's meeting.
Well, it could be, but we've got a lot of activity tomorrow, so I don't want to distract from that tomorrow. So let's, is everyone okay with that, pushing off number, item number 10?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, anybody disagree with that? Okay. Uh, concerns of the commission. Anybody have any thoughts at this point?
On today, on tonight?
Yes, are any concerns?
I don't have any concerns on tonight, but I know there's over 200 letters for tomorrow's meeting. I hope we're not gonna read those all at the meeting tomorrow.
No, we won't, we can, uh-
Okay, good.
So i- i- is there a way to reference the number of letters and say, I'm looking at you, Sarah, here are the four issues, pro and con?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I could, I'm sorry, Laura. You told me to yell at you, I apologize.
So Sarah, we're, we're talking about tomorrow, and the fact that there's 200 plus?
Yeah, I mean, we could summarize and say, we received a total of so many letters. There's this many that are in support, there's this many that are against, and here are some general, kind of over, you know, overarching concerns, or, you know, items and that. I think that would be a great way to try to deal with that-
Yeah, because there were some that were general, and there were some very unique and specific, too. And I think we'd want to, we'd want to identify those, too. Yep.
Yeah, so we can work on that, um, to have for you for the meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
Um, we will have to see what happens tomorrow night. I mean, we have to allow everybody in for an open meeting. So if we don't have enough space, we'll have to, uh, adjourn the meeting and find a different location.
Airport.
Anybody can speak. Yep, I mean, there's no designation between if you live here, don't live here, you, you know.
Yeah, let's, I want to keep this moving here. Move it open to public comment. This would be about anything not related to the two events we just talked about, correct? Is there anybody that would like to come forward? Please submit a comment card and address the commission. No. Any different items? So would you like to make some comments, Alan?
Make it quick.
Okay, so, uh, I think that's it for the public comment. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting is adjourned.